Morning, members of council and staff and everybody who is watching us out in the community. Welcome to Committee of the Whole for November 1st, 2022. And before we start, I'd like to acknowledge that Wolfville is situated in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq. And as such, ask that we conduct our business with the seven sacred teachings in mind. Truth, honesty, love, courage, respect, wisdom, and humility. And with that, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. I will mention before I ask for a mover and a second or there are two items to add, we'll add one under the audit committee report, and that's the appointment of the auditor. And Director McLean may have some comments about that if he wishes. And I have just a very brief, we had a VCFN meeting yesterday morning, so I couldn't get a report in, but a very brief verbal report. So are there any other additions?
No.
They're not, counsel? So with that, with those two additions, could I have a mover for minutes? Counselor Butler and seconded by Counselor Elliott. No other comments, all in favor of the agenda as amended? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, and that is passed. And approval of the minutes of Committee of the Whole, Committee of the Whole minutes of October 4th, 2022. Motion to approve Deputy Mayor Madira Voss. And secondor, Counselor Ingham, are there any errors or omissions in those minutes? Did anybody found? Okay. All those in favor of the minutes of Committee of the Whole for October 4th, 2022, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, those are passed. And a mover and a secondor for approval of the Committee of the Whole in camera minutes of October 4th, 2022. Counselor Elliott and Counselor Butler, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, those are passed. And finally, Special Committee of the Whole minutes of October 18th, 2022. Mover, please. Deputy Mayor Madira Voss and a secondor, please. Counselor Ingham, are there any errors or omissions in those? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of those minutes, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, and those are passed. Now we have a presentation on the farmer's market. I understand that staff from the farmer's market are a bit under the weather today. So Director Lake is going to do the presentation for us. Whenever you ready, Director Lake. And I don't think you're doing reinventing red and blue. But you could.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Yeah, Kelly Marie at the market is under the weather. So I am going to deliver this, not just be on behalf of the market, but on behalf of the feasibility working group that's been convening for the last couple of years. So this Venn diagram that you see was done by our former staff, Alicia Christie, actually, in the early stages of working through this. And I'll just maybe let people know if I can zoom in here. The team that you see here on the Venn diagram are those of us that have been engaged in this work on looking to expand the Wolfville Farmers Market. Other than Ryan McNeil, who's been replaced on the Acadia side by Edith Callahan. It's a really strong group from the market, the town, and Acadia. So this really represents some of the values, sort of purpose. And some of it is more high-level strategic things that sort of align with the different groups, trying to bring everyone together to work together. So I just wanted to zoom out a little bit as we talk about the market and some of the change that is forthcoming in that area. So I've just highlighted a few things more from the town's perspective that do have impacts on the area. So we're talking about moving the compost facility eventually. You can see that in the very top of the screen. There's Cavanaugh's and former Johnny's site that I think over the next number of years, the life cycle of my time here, we'll probably, we'll probably, we'll see a change in use. We have parking lots in that area. We have the train station as well, which is going through a transition. And then we have the market sort of right in that area. So the frontage on Elm Avenue has long been more of an industrial use. And a big part of this has been improving or trying to improve the presence of the farmer's market. A lot of this, just for council's information, is focused around improving the health of the food system. So obviously, the market is focused on producers and providing access, local access. And a lot of the focus has been around this process and distribution and the gaps in the food system around those, around those pieces. So you'll see, you'll see as some more details come out of this project, that's really where the focus is. Our municipal plan, we do have policy aspirations around supporting this type of work. I, this is a direct page from the municipal planning strategy. And so a lot of this work started with these real three challenges and opportunities. I alluded to the presence, the piece off of Elm Avenue, and really improving that presence for such a strong institution in the community. The need for space, so the, the market is, I think most of you know, kind of bursting at the seams with the different pieces of their business. And then growing out and, you know, doing more place making and having more, again, it's part of that presence, but sort of claiming some more of that site for the activities that the market undertakes. That said, it is a fairly complicated area in terms of ownership. You have the rail line to the north of the site. The site itself is owned by Acadia University. The town has a lease to the west for the parking lot. There's storage, obviously, in the DeWolf space. This is the DeWolf warehouse space here, if you can see my cursor on the screen. The Curling Club to the south, and then other sort of private ownership around it. So it, it is fairly complicated in terms of expansion and how to move forward with that. And that's why the partnership is so important. So the feasibility working group, I'll try to speak to this on Kelly's behalf. But so some of the work to date, so there was a research team that did reach out to stakeholders around needs and resources. And that was one of the first tasks that was undertaken through some academic funding through the university. We learned best practices of regional food hubs through extensive research findings, clarified stakeholders, infrastructure and equipment needs, identified overlaps and goals, opportunities, desired outcomes, and obtained funding to hire external consultants to assess the food hub project business case. So that's to the right of this slide, to the left are our more recent pieces of work. So that funding to do the business case has kicked off. There has been a strategic plan done at the Wolfville Farmers Market, kind of an update of what they've done. And a membership review as well. And the business case work has really been focused more on two aspects at this point. So the first phase is really about enhancing the market, about maximizing the capacity of the spaces that are presently used. So that's both indoor and outdoor. And so this features elements like a stage at the west end and seating area, expanding the kitchen to be a learning kitchen and beautification around the outdoors of the market. The second phase has the potential to actually expand the footprint and the capacity of the co-op. And it could feature elements like a much more CFIA kitchen, a, an Elm Street facing store that's going into the, the DeWolf storage space, a food hub and distribution center in that area, experimental learning with the university, small classrooms, and small business incubation work hub space. And there's, there's many other ideas, but that's the sort of longer term feasibility that we're working on with this project. So there has been, and I believe most of council has seen this, this is just an illustrative concept to get people thinking more than anything, just about the potential of the site. So again, you can see the Acadia storage. There is particularly in Phase 1, something that will happen on the west side of the building, just to expand what the market can do in and around the parking lot and just improve how the market operates. So I think that is really the update at this point. I, I would like to just maybe ask Counselor Madira Voss, who's also on the working group, to maybe add some comments to this if she would, but.
Well, I think you've covered it very well in terms of where we are. It is a very good working group. I think it's the partnerships, there's a lot of potential for some very good partnerships coming from, from that table. I think there's still some, some challenges around location that we're slowly working through. I, it's interesting listening to this because, as you know, one of the reasons I was joining this group is because of the work I had done with the Culinary Tourism Center prior, because we were looking then at looking at the DeWolf building. And many of the components that were to be in that project, we see here. And so it's, it's kind of interesting how things are meshing. And I think we're also working very closely with Devour, because they're also going to have a kid. So they're, they're trying to avoid duplication in terms of the things that go into this so that it, it is strategically positioning itself to fill some, some gaps. What I found very interesting was learning about the work that Edith Callahan has been doing with her students and some of the vendors and the studies. It's really quite important. And I think there's a potential for this to really position Acadia in a, in a unique role in terms of agriculture, agriculture research. That's the, you know, the whole food table. It's, it's a very topical thing at the moment, not just nationally, but Acadia's connection to the market, the size of our community does allow students to have a kind of direct lab experience that would be difficult to obtain anywhere else. So I think it has done some wonderful work in trying to push that agenda, which is a real benefit to Acadia. You know, I'm encouraged by the history of the market and this, the partnership. When you think back to the days of President Ivany and the vision that he had, his, you know, the importance that he placed on community and real community connections and that, you know, you've got to put teeth behind those connections. And that, you know, taking a shed, essentially, what was a working shed, storage shed, and leasing that for a dollar, and then allowing the market and the community to really mount a very successful capital campaign that transformed a building that's now not only an asset to the community, but it's also an asset to Acadia. So there's so many wins that on, on so many fronts. If we try to continue to pursue that model that, that he founded, however many years ago, I can't remember how long ago that was. But, but, but also this really points to the growth in the market. The, the fact that during COVID, the Wolfville Farmers Market to go has just exploded. I mean, it is, it's huge, and that requires a lot of space. So the, the, the requirements they have go well beyond now just tables for vendors. You know, if you think of where they started around the old chimney and where we are now, and, and the now moving into the importance of food distribution and all this, it's really quite remarkable work. So it's, it's a very exciting project on many levels. And I think it does present an opportunity for, for us to, again, create some exceptional partnership modeling between all the entities.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any questions of council to either Director Lake or to Deputy Mayor Madira Voss? Comments or questions?
Counselor Elliott? Thank you. Do you sense either of you that Acadia would be more willing to give up the DeWolf warehouse space for other uses? Because it was a hard no before. So I just wondered if the tone had changed.
I think that's why we're doing the feasibility study is, is there's, there's definitely a willingness there to look at it. But, you know, they, they have needs also to, to store things and, and to figure out where those are going to go.
Comments, questions? Thank you, Director Lake, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I would say just before, and maybe in response to Counselor Elliott's comment, certainly some of your comments, Isabel, were very consistent with what we said a couple of years ago that we wanted to do in terms of our economic expansion. So, and, and perhaps, you know, putting my town and gown hat on and, and Counselor Butler, yours, as we go forward with the MOU, maybe this is something that, that can, because it is a tangible thing that, that we would, we as a town would like from Acadia. And maybe that's also an avenue to pursue if we haven't already got that in our, in our quiver. All right, thank you to, to presenters and send our best wishes to Kelly Marie, that she makes a speedy recovery. And I do not think we have anybody for public input, but I'll check one more time before going beyond that. Mike Long?
We do not.
Still no one, and I don't see any public in the audience. So that brings us to committee reports and audit committee. Counselor McKay, is there anything you'd like to add? And then maybe Director McLean would like to.
Nothing to add? Are we doing the RFD as part of this?
We are.
Okay.
So do you want to, want to come up?
Walk us through that, Director McLean? And we did discuss this RFD.
The CAO mentioned that this motion is not in the motion list, but it's in the RFD.
There is a motion in the RFD, so all it would require is the committee will recommend to council. With regards to the appointment of the auditor, and if you had time to read the report, but it was obviously late getting out, and the audit committee didn't even have it written at the time. So we are in a four, the fourth year of a four-year term with the standing offer with the auditors. That's the routine that we go through with them. But annually, what should be looked at is both the fees and the level of service that's received. So it's not just fee-based. There has been occasion in the past where the fees were in excess of the agreed amount. It's a while ago. So that becomes a concern when that happens, if it wasn't appropriately managed through the senior management team here. So we have no issues with the fees. It fits within their four-year program. And the audit committee had a, what I would call a, a brief conversation around the level of service. And that reflects the fact that the level of service, I think, all members of the committee, and I'll defer to the chair to add any comments on that. But the service from staff perspective has been good. We're still trying to work out the kinks of an online web portal that we use to upload working papers. We've worked with a couple of different ones. And I don't think we're quite where we'd like to be staff level, but it doesn't impact the nature of the audit. And I think the interaction with the audit committee, again, defer to the chair or members that sit on that committee, but I think it's, it's gone well. So the recommendation is to reappoint for this final fourth year.
Counselor McKay, do you have the motion in front of you?
Yeah, I do. I would move that Committee of the Whole forward to counsel the appointment of Grant Thornton as the town auditors for the fiscal year ending March 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Counselor Butler, second that, are there any questions of either staff or of the audit committee? Or counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, thank you, Director McLean, that is passed. And Deputy Mayor Madira Voss, anything to add to the RCMP Advisory Board?
No, I think, I think it stands was a short meeting. Yeah.
And Plesing Service Review Committee, CAO, and who you'd like to add?
Yeah, the only thing to highlight is that the committee is going through its work plan. And we did attach to the report a copy of the findings from the What We Heard Report for your information. The committee's coming back together at the end of the month to talk through the community expectations and levels of service piece. And at that point, we will come back to council just for a check-in to make sure that we're on the same page before going to the next step, which is really getting ready for the call for proposals. So that will either happen in December or early in the new year, depending how long it takes for the committee to finalize the next step. But it will come back to council before it goes beyond that, just for a check-in.
Any questions of council for the CAO? On that, I think you see. Brings us back to you after the CAO report.
So you have it in front of you, just a couple of things that weren't in there that I want to highlight. So we have gone through the submissions that we received for the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. We had four submissions. We haven't finalized a contract, so I won't publicly give any details yet. But we are in the process of negotiating with a successful proponent to finalize that. And what we're hoping to do is to have a meeting at the end of November, if possible. And I wanted to just check with folks on their calendars to do a kickoff with council, suggest maybe the 29th, it's a Tuesday night and sort of either 4:30 or, or 6:00 in our regular time slot in the evening, if that works for, for folks. And so we'll get that contract finalized, and then it gives us a chance to get organized and then come in and officially kick it off with counsel before the holiday break. So if tentatively the 29th, you can keep open if that looks good, that would be great. And we're going to aim for that of November.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
That look good for everyone? I'm seeing heads shaking, Counselor Ingham.
So it'll be exciting to get that, to get that going. Another thing to note, we are going to try an overnight parking pilot this winter in the East End Gateway. It's not intended to be long-term parking for folks that don't have another spot that can just park there for the whole winter. It's intended to be short-term for visitors coming into town or for those that might be downtown and, and enjoying our spirits and needing to keep their vehicle overnight. We're going to keep an eye on it from a public works perspective in terms of how the snow clearing goes. We will be monitoring it from a compliance perspective if it gets abused. And we will report back, but we're going to give it a go. So that will be in the East End Gateway. So we'll get some information out to the public. Our winter parking ban does come into effect beginning of December. So Barb's starting to prepare some messaging, and we'll, we'll start doing that throughout the month of November so folks aren't caught off guard. And the other piece I wanted to mention is we're, we're probably about two weeks out before we'll be able to lift the water conservation advisory. We're just teeing up, trying to get everything installed. And I don't, Alex isn't able to be here yet, so he was going to give an update. But we're hoping that within the next two weeks, we'll be able to finalize that and lift the advisory. I know we've been getting a lot of questions, so that's where we stand on that.
That means they found the computer chip?
Apparently, yes. So those were the things that I wanted to highlight that weren't in the report. I don't know if anyone has any questions for anything that was in the report already that you had in front of you. But if you do, I can certainly take any questions.
Are there any questions of counsel, from counsel? I just have a question about the Energy Smart Business Program. And I'm, I'm understanding from what I read that this company will go into businesses and assess their energy use. That was my question. Okay. All right, thank you, CAO. So that brings us to staff reports for discussion. And I think Director Thomason is probably going to present the first one on red and blue crew request.
Good morning, counsel. I'm going to make a couple of introductions, and hopefully I'm not going to do the presentation. We're going to have Sienna, our co-op student, to join us and lead us through the presentation. Joining us online is the president of the Academy Alumni Association, Matt Rios. You may or may not remember Matt from his time at Acadia as, as I think a two-term president of the ASU and an active member of the community. When this all started for me, I turned to Matt, and it was, it was with his full endorsement that, that he sort of allowed me to start this work and, and put this into, into, into motion. So for that, I'm very thankful. He's going to make a few opening comments for us. Follow us through the presentation and the RFD, and is prepared to answer any questions that, that you may have of him. And again, Sienna will lead us through the presentation after Matt's opening comments. So I will leave it for that. And, and Matt, if you have a few things to say, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Kelton, and thank you, counsel, for providing the space today to have this conversation. I know many of you, and I very much wish I was in Wolfville today, but I'm pleased to be joining from Halifax to speak about a really exciting initiative that I think will have direct benefits, not only for our university campus, but also for the community of Wolfville, that being the red and blue crew. And as Kelton noted, I'm really, really happy and grateful that Sienna will be doing the heavy lifting, talking about the specifics of this initiative. But on a personal note, I just wanted to take the opportunity to share my enthusiasm and endorsement for, for this opportunity. Not only do I think we have, you know, a really unique opportunity to partner across, you know, all of the key constituencies within our community of Wolfville and Acadia. I, I know from my own lived experience that we are at our best when we think innovatively about addressing community issues and campus issues. And having spent many years at Acadia working with town council, I know that there are great reference points to sort of look back and try and leverage from, from learned experience. Beyond that, I guess I'd be remiss not to note that when this program was initiated back in 2012, I was, I was a student leader. And as many of you would know, in 2012, we, we lost a student. 2011, we lost a student to alcohol poisoning. Candidly, it was devastating on campus. It still informs a lot of the way I look at the world now. And not just because of sort of the, the tragedy of it, but also in a positive light, the real intentionality that was put towards trying to address systemic alcohol harms on our campus and in our community. And as I referenced, what we learnt from that, what I learnt from that is that we are at our best when we work collectively and innovatively to think through how we address systemic issues. And one of the outcomes of that work was indeed the creation of this red and blue crew, which you're going to hear more about today. And at a high level, you know, this, this program is really focused on active participation of students and community members, and in particular, supporting students in, you know, the development of a number of pieces of training, including bystander training, which is really predicated on, on the notion of wanting to be good neighbors and taking care of each other. As an alumni association, we feel it's a responsibility of our organization to support our students who will one day be alumni. And this is an initiative that Kelton and I are very enthusiastic about. Our board is very enthusiastic about. And we see ourselves as seed funders for, for this initiative. But we know we can't be successful without your support and the support of the broader university community. So I'm going to turn it over to Sienna and to Kelton. But I really do just want to thank you all for giving us the space to have this discussion. And I'm happy to answer any questions as they may come up.
Thank you, Matt, and nice to see you again.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Kelton, and Mayor Donovan and counsel. So we're going to be looking at reinventing the red and blue crew. As Matt mentioned, this was an initiative that started in 2012. Unfortunately, it wasn't sustainable. It did begin after a, sorry, I forgot, I have to do both screens. It started after the alcohol-related death of a student. And Acadia actually used a bystander training model that came out of Stony Brook University in New York. They called it the Red Watch Band. And Acadia used that program and kind of adapted it to what Acadia needed at the time. And it was training for students to support other students and build a stronger community. But unfortunately, it was soft-funded, so it wasn't sustainable. There is a lack of funding and resources to keep it going. And it did end up fading out, which is why we're looking at getting a more sustainable foundation for it this time around. So the goals of the red and blue crew, they're going to, it's going to be training students to use pro-social behaviors. Pro-social behaviors are just behaviors that have the intent to benefit another person or society as a whole. And it conforms to socially acceptable behaviors. They're positive, they're helpful. And as we know, when students digest alcohol, they're not always going to be acting in a very acceptable manner. So the red and blue crew will help train students to look out. So the red and blue crew will help train students to look out for that as well as encourage students to provide those pro social behaviors. It's going to be educational and there's going to be training for first aid responders with alcohol related crises, specifically in the areas of harm reduction with alcohol, sexual assault reduction and E D I advancement. The red and blue crew is going to help teach students how to look out for themselves, but also look out for each other as well, showing that peer to peer help is available if things go wrong or when someone needs assistance. And the red and blue crew will work to influence positive behaviors, both on and off campus and support student development as well. When looking at revamping this project, we were really looking at it from a holistic view. It's not just alcohol related first aid training. There's going to be a few different key pieces to it. One of the main parts being E D I micro grants, which, as we all know, has been put at the forefront of our community. And it's also something that has been mentioned throughout the talks of the M O U revision, just putting E D I as a as a lens right in the front and center of things. So we'd be looking at getting some funding that would allow for E D I micro grants that anyone would have access to to use to promote and plan programming or events related to E D I. There'd be a community advisor program, which was also mentioned in the M O U, but this would look at having some student employment. These students would be employed under the community advisor program and they'd be working Thursday, Friday, Saturday in the evenings, just being around town, being that support that's available to students. And with the student employment, we'd also be looking at getting some co op opportunities as well. And in my totally unbiased opinion, can't speak more highly enough about. So there is some opportunity there to leverage some academic opportunity through co op as well as some employment opportunities that benefit the community as well. We'd be looking at using a reduction of alcohol, sexual assault harms, using production methods and bystander training models. This would be a training that we would hope that the red and blue crew coordinator would be able to provide. And we'd also be looking at getting some connection with the Acadia First Responders Team. They're usually based out of sporting games, but we'd be looking at getting them a bit more connected with this program and with the community as well. And then there's opportunity, as always, for some intermural leadership. This could be refereeing, it could be coaching, it could be lifeguarding at the pool. But we'd be looking at incorporating that into because the more students are involved with the community, the more they're gonna see it as a place that they don't want to ruin. So there's always some opportunity for some professional and personal leadership growth. And we'd be looking at using all of these opportunities for that for students. Here you'll see a very interestingly constructed diagram with the red and blue crew coordinator right in the middle of it. We'd be looking at having this coordinator be connected with all sorts of different people within Acadia, within the town, so that they can truly have as much reach as they can. So they'd be connected to the Good Neighbors Group, the Keep It Social Initiative. They'd be connected with town compliance, ASU executive and alumni. They'd be working with outside agencies for bystander training. And they'd be really connected in every aspect of the Woolfield community, not just on campus, but off campus as well, which is really important when you're looking at this because everything Acadia does affects Woolfield and vice versa. So being able to reach out and build those connections and then use them for this program is going to benefit not only the students, but the permanent community members as well. The Community Alcohol Strategy was put in front of you not too long ago. But as we all know, Community Alcohol Strategy, it ties really nicely into this program because alcohol is at the front and center of our town and gown community. It doesn't always mean that it's misused, but it certainly creates challenges and issues within our community. But there's opportunities that exist to improve the current conditions. The Community Alcohol Strategy aims to create awareness, establish events and programming, and create enforcement, which the red and blue crew is also trying to do. It's also important to note that while the Community Alcohol Strategy ties really nicely into this, we we are aware that alcohol is not the only issue. There is misuse of drugs as well, but this is a starting point for us. So creating this program and then being able to evolve it afterwards is what we're looking at at the moment. We have a quote here from Olivia Shive. She was the class president of 2021. And when Kelton had met with the Alumni Association, there were some talks after the presentation. We were able to get some really helpful feedback from both Olivia and Kirsten Palmer, who's on the next slide. But Olivia said that when she was in school, alcohol was attributable to lots of students' mental and physical health issues. A lot of students would begin alcohol abuse due to the stressful atmosphere that university contributes to. With this information, we need change. I believe that this initiative of the red and blue crew is a great start to this change and not only could help our students, but also save lives. And as we know, that's the key part of this because the initiative did come out of a student death, which is what ultimately we want to avoid. And then Kirsten Palmer, the class president of 2022, said, in my experience at Acadia, there is a noticeable lack of student support. This is in no way to say that the people who are now employed to help students are not doing their job, but to say that we now, what we have now is not enough. I see extreme value in the possibility of reintroducing a red and blue crew on campus as I believe students would benefit from learning how to be active bystanders and knowing that they have a resource they can trust when they too are at up their depths to handle something alone. When you're on campus, you have the help of R A's. You don't always want to go to R A's, but you do have that help. The red and blue crew is kind of taking that R A stance and shifting it off campus, which is a which is something that we don't have established yet. Essentially, like off campus R A's, but it's peer to peer. So there's no, there's no fear of judgment. There's no fear of they're gonna be in trouble. The red and blue crew simply just wants to help and be there for you if you're in crisis. Now, this is a slide probably no one will like, but this budget that we have drafted up leads to our ask, which is gonna be on the next slide. But when idealizing this red and blue crew, you also have to look at, well, this is gonna cost some money. So where is this money gonna come from and what does it include? So we'd be looking at getting a full time red and blue crew coordinator. And then they'd also get some benefits based on their salary. There'd be some funding for co op opportunity and part time student employment and investments that are going to be train the trainer. This could be nonviolent crisis intervention assist training. And this would be training that we would provide the full time coordinator so that they are able to train students that are going to be involved in the red and blue crew. This budget also includes promotion, which has uniforms in it so that people know who the red and blue crew are if they're out on the streets late at night. There'd be some programming equipment costs as well. And then the intermural leadership development and the E D I micro grants take up a fair chunk of this budget that we've drafted up as well because we want to make sure that the intermural leadership development and the E D I micro grants have us a fair a fair portion of it so that we're able to promote it to students. And that they can feel that there's there's that there that they can use. They can develop their personal and professional leadership skills. And they can also promote things on and off campus as well, which they don't always have the opportunity to do unless they're involved in something a bit more set in stone already. And then for our ask, we'd be looking at getting support for a four year pilot project with the requirement that at the four year mark, the red and blue crew coordinator will be responsible to find the funding afterwards to keep this program sustainable. And this is dependent on all four parties committing. So the town of Woolfield, Acadia University, Acadia Students Union and the Acadia Alumni Association. The amount in year four for Acadia University and the alumni would switch respectfully, but we'd be asking the town to commit to $25,000 per year. And we're also looking at having something in the agreement that would allow you to take a step back if things aren't going as well as we would hope before the end of that four years as well. Now, with this money that we're asking for, we also want you to be aware of how it can benefit the town. Because at the end of the day, you're gonna be looking at this as a commitment from your end as a dollar amount, but what are you gonna be getting out of it? The red and blue crew is connected with the Community Alcohol Strategy, as I mentioned earlier. But it will also support an activation of student based community advisor programs in Woolfield, which was referenced in the M O U but not moved forward. It would have a potential to reduce the downstream harms of alcohol misuse, specifically in the areas of alcohol harm and sexual assault production. And it would have the potential to reduce community damages as well, which at the end of the day is one of the larger issues of alcohol misuse in our community. The E D I micro grants lend it to a more inclusive programming within campus and our greater community as well as providing programming that's going to support student employment and student development. And this program will hopefully develop pro social behaviors in students, in community members. And it's designed to create additional programming and training opportunities for students. Again, it's a peer to peer support program, but there is opportunity for the students that are in this program to have nonviolent crisis intervention, alcohol first aid training, mental health first aid training. And at the end of the day, when our students are out in our community, if they're going to a house party or they're going downtown, they're gonna be encouraging others to look at these behaviors and say, hey, what you're doing isn't great. Let's maybe try to focus on this part. And they'll be able, they'll be trained and educated to look out for those programs. If they're seeing a student on the street that maybe doesn't look too well, they'll be able to help them in a way that maybe if they didn't have this training, they wouldn't be able to. So those are just some of the benefits. We didn't want to overload you with information, which I know I probably just did anyway. But at the end of the day, I I personally can't speak highly enough about the initiative behind this program. As a student, there's a lot that I see on and off campus that I think could use some development. And when we were drafting this up, I honestly was so excited about it. And I know that with early conversations with Acadia University, there is some positive conversations that were happening and we can actually tie this into their strategic plan as well. So that's something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sienna. That was very comprehensive report, presentation. And I know Counselor Butler and I have a copy of that. I wonder if the rest of council could receive it for their for their review. Members of council, any questions of either Director Lake or Sienna or Matt, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Sienna. That was a very interesting presentation. And I I welcome the the reference to this program having run before. I I'm just curious, when it did run in 2012, what was it successful? Do you have a a report on the results? Is there anything we can look at to see? Because I'm curious about how that was structured, the organizational structure behind it, and also whether you were able to evaluate its success at the time.
I think Matt. I think Matt was probably the best person to answer that question, given that that he was there. Again, it was a a program off the corner of someone's desk that that has some some data. They have done some stuff, but I would I would let Matt weigh in because I was I was not there at the time.
I think, thank you, Kelton, and I think you've probably framed up the expectations. There wasn't a rigorous evaluation at the time. We were candidly trying to bring all resources to bear to mitigate harms on campus. What I can tell you is that first and foremost, in the subsequent years, we we didn't have another alcohol related death on campus. I mean, that that candidly was our first measure of success. Our secondary measure was the behaviors that we were seeing on campus. And interestingly, what we actually saw on campus at the time, and this is a good indicator of how training was working. So we actually saw an increase in ambulances being called to campus in the in the subsequent year. And we know there was a direct correlation with folks understanding their responsibility to look out for their friends and for their fellow students. Beyond that, though, the red and blue crew was also actively engaged. And this is during the time of of the transition between Mayor Sted and and Mayor Kentwell. The red and blue crew was actively engaged in working within community, looking at leveraging best practices from other jurisdictions at reducing things like noise and some of those secondary impacts of alcohol that, again, we are cognizant, happen within our community. So again, from a measures perspective, I know those are just two examples of sort of what the program looked like. But I think, again, this in tandem with the other strategies that you folks are moving forward, I think, is is really the focus here. There is no panacea. There's no silver bullet, unfortunately, but this is, I think, a tool in our toolkit that, at the very least at the margins, can reduce some of the adverse impacts that we know exist within community.
Thank you. And if I could just ask, the E D I micro program, could you just indicate what E D I for the those who are listening? It may not know what E D I stands for.
Sure. E D I stands for Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. So we'd be looking at getting some micro grants for programming on that.
Counselor Ingham.
Thank you, Sienna. You did a great job. I can see the passion in your voice. I do have a couple of questions, actually. The first one is, I think you alluded to it in the end. The other partners that you've asked for money, the Alumni Association, Acadia and the ASU, have you presented to them and have they committed any? Has there been any commitment from them yet?
I will, I will speak to an early discussion I had with the board. The board, the alumni board, went through a presentation and gave me the green light to pursue this with other funding partners. So in principle, they're prepared to take this forward into their budget. And if there's anything else you wanted to add with that, Matt, I'm happy to to let you speak to that. We've had some early discussions with Acadia. They're they are interested in the program. They're interested in taking that forward to to their budget deliberations, much, much like we're asking council. And I think Sienna is meeting with the ASU next week to have a formal conversation about this.
So I understand the program and I know there's there's already probably existing programs at Acadia that deal with E D I that deal with bystander training through different departments. So how does how does this differentiate with other the other programs that are already like in the in the works at Acadia with staff and the departments that are there? And how would this benefit just specifically the red and blue crew project? Because I I know about bystander training as a coach at Acadia, we had to, the all the athletes had to take that. So I know some students are trained in that and I'm sure, you know, the counseling department, you know, the the equity and diversity, they all have programs and they all have students working there. So how does this integrate and how does it how how is it different? And why should why should we? How how do we see the difference as a council?
I would think when you say integrate, that's probably the key, the key piece of that question. I think there's a number of programs that are that are happening on campus. I think my my conversations with with James Sanford around this would be being able to pull these programs together and and housed with a with a student leadership team that would would sort of pull them together and and make sure that they're they're moving forward in a in a sort of en masse collective approach as opposed to one offs. The 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 bystander training started a few years ago and developed into a provincial program, which is great. I think we need to encourage that. We need to bring in our Keep It Social folks, our counseling centers. Yeah, it's it's about integrating the the delivery of this with all service providers on campus as opposed to being sort of random.
Thank you. I have one last question, if that's okay. Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm I was looking at the model and I see the coordinator and it's there's a lot of students, there's co op and everything. And we see all these arrows, how they're how it's gonna benefit the community. So, you know, we're looking at E D I, we're what else are we looking at? We're looking at alcohol strategy, compliance, bystander, all of these. So I I'm I, I'm seeing the one person that's the coordinator, which I'm, you know, is not an Acadia student. So what, what kind of training is this coordinator going to have that we feel that he's confident enough to be dealing with all these issues that you pointed the arrows at into our community?
I, I think the higher of this person, um, will be key. I think they need to be more than, than a recent grad. They need to bring with, with them some experience in health promotion in, in terms of building relationships and capacity, program management. And, and sort of marketing a program to students. And, and I will speak, uh, from experience, lived experience, the capacity within with our, within our co-op students is, is, is huge. And having a, a co-op student for the, for the academic year, both terms will aid in, in this and will be, will be a great opportunity for that student, uh, experience. The, the higher for the, the coordinator will be key. There's no question. Um, and that person will have to bring with them some depth and experience that, that will be most beneficial if this is going to be successful.
Thank you, Counselor McKay.
Thank you. Um, I've had a couple of the, thank you, Sienna. That was awesome. It's a great presentation. Um, saying the same questions as my colleagues here. I'm wondering about the white paper. So it says uh, Academy has requested a full white paper to be drafted and town staff is going to take that on, it seems like. So I'm curious as to why we are writing a white paper. Is this sort of to gather all of this information we're asking for? And do they need that to make a decision? Because if the answer is yes, I'd say probably everyone does. Um, and why is it living within this town staff realm, uh, when this is going to be an Acadia employee? And then what projects won't be done by us when those things are done? Because I know we're all tied on.
I think there's two questions in there. Uh, normally there are with you and sometimes it's, sometimes it's easier to dissect and and sometimes it's, uh, less so. Sienna is with us on a, on a co-op experience this fall around community harmony. She will do the breadth of the initial work around the white paper developing that. That white paper is intended to both, uh, formalize the, the presentation in a, in a, in a document that we can expand on certain areas and questions that have come forward from here, and certainly questions that will come forward from, from Acadia. So it is to, to package that in a way that council and Acadia have answers and essentially the terms of what will be in agreement to move this forward. So this is, uh, I'm, 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 I'm doing some of this in my role with, with the town. Sienna's taking a, a fair bit of this on. And I'm also committing some volunteer hours that, that I do as, as I serve on the board to, to move this agenda forward.
Thank you for that. Um. I, I have questions around the outcome. So will the white paper then give us what? You know, what we'd like to see it be, what the metrics of evaluation would be, um, where there wasn't any before. For me, that's a bit of a stumbling block because I, I like data, so. And will that white paper then flesh out all?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's questions that I, that I knew you would ask before I presented and, and you didn't disappoint. There has to be some measurables put in place and that has to be outlined in the white paper. Um, and that, that goes to very quantitative data that says we've trained X number of students in this. And some qualitative data that said the experience is, is, is moving along. So there will be some some capture points that allow us to sort of share in our successes or how are we going to do better on this? Um, and, and yes, that will form a component of this, this sort of document moving forward.
Go ahead. Maybe there are questions, maybe there are not. Um, so for me, I'm, I'm, I'm not, it's a question of why now and why outside of the MOU? We're in that process and kind of starting that right now too. So I'd like to it's, I don't like piecing things. It's really easier to look at it holistically and say, we're giving this, we're getting that. This is the, this is the input, this is the output. Um, and without seeing that whole thing, whether it's CMO or the budget, I think this is a little bit early for me. So how does that work? For that. And then I, the other thing that concerns me is the level of input and influence. This is going to be in Acadia. Employee who's going to have direct responsibilities to the Academy organization, according to that arrow book thing. Um, so, and having been around the table a little bit now for the last little while, the things that don't seem to work for us are we give money to fund X. Access to a pool. We've talked about it with Landmark Beaks, giving money and saying we wanted access to money's into our, saying we wanted influence in the things that we keep giving money to, but don't have a direct voice in influencing the outcomes seems to be problematic for us. So that's where I sit and I need to know how that would work. To get bang for our buck.
I, I'm happy to answer a bit of the why now question. Sorry.
Well, I was just, I expect Erin and I about to say the same thing. So you go and.
Yeah, we may, we may not. We'll see. Uh, no, the motion in front of you right now is to refer it to budget. So we wanted to do a touch point now that if you thought there was any interest at all in this to move it through the budget process to your point. That allows us to get a bit further with the MOU to see how this will link in. It does link into the alcohol strategy and some of the other community harmony pieces that live even outside of the MOU. But allows all the partners to go through that process. And as we get through budget, we're going to be getting through those MOU discussions at the same time. So it's either going to fit or it won't. So we're not asking you to commit now. We're asking if there's enough interest referred to the budget process. I asked the same question of Kelton around how do all the partners engage from a governance perspective? So it does make sense for this person to live at Acadia, but we would see some kind of oversight committee of the four representatives being really integrally involved in the program so that we have that oversight and connection back to each of the funding partners. So I agree with you. You don't want to just turn it over and then not be involved in the outcomes or so, okay.
It was the same thing. Other, Counselor Elliott.
Thank you. Um, really just a comment. Um, in my former, um, existence, I had to go and photograph student behaviors. And, uh, cheating cop, for example, uh, I'll never forget watching a young woman on Saturday morning staggering down Highland Avenue. She could not, she could not motor herself. If her friends hadn't been there holding her up, she would have been a pool of humanity. Uh, and that happens way too much because because alcohol's been moved into the town. And so I have no, no question that there's a need. I've also sat in on, um, the football team training in bystander assist, and it was really impressive. I imagine it was the same as, as with the pool team too. The, the the thought of widening that out is good. So I'm glad to include this in the budget negotiations, consultations.
Deputy Mayor.
I, I agree that, that the bystander, uh, training piece would be a wonderful thing to expand. Um, I'm very supportive of peer-to-peer training because I think it has proven to be very effective on many for many types of things, not just, not just this. So there are pieces of this I really like. There are pieces of this I'm not comfortable with. And I'm not, I, I, I guess I would, um, take, uh, CEO Bowden's uh, advice that we, you know, maybe move this to budget and in the meantime, try to get some, some answers, but I, I I, there are too many questions for me around the, the structure. The, the way it's, it's organized links to other services within Acadia, links to other groups outside of Acadia, because as a town, we do have access to other resources as well, which I don't think are even mentioned here. So there, there are a lot of question marks, uh, and I, I think there's some areas where the little bit more homework is needed uh, for me to feel, um, fully comfortable in, in, in supporting the package. But as I say, I think peer-to-peer, uh, you know, work is very important. The bystander, I think there's some very important elements in here that really deserve to be supported. But, um, I'd just like to see a little bit more work done.
Yeah, and I think, um, I, I think developing that white paper will, will assist in that. And I think, um, one of the questions sort of why now? Uh, I think council can be commended on, on their work over the last number of years regarding bylaws and our, our, our compliance team, uh, but that's reactive pieces. And as a student affairs professional in, in another life, the development piece is, is key to me. So I am looking to, um, allow this program to help build on the code of conduct, to help build on, you know, forming and informing student behavior. Prior to the compliance and conduct piece at the end of it. So I think I, I think that's probably why now, because we put in place some of the, so, some of the reactive stuff and, and it's done well. So let's back it up and, and get the, the forward-thinking stuff, uh, included as well. But to your point, um, I, and I'm happy to understand what a few more of those questions need to be to help answer those throughout, uh, throughout the next development of the white paper.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
Um, I, I just wanted to say that I, I do support this going through to the budget process. Um, after a couple of discussions, um, I've, I've reread it three or four times, even after the initial meeting. And I do still have a lot of questions and I have a lot of things that, um, I need more clarification on. But in terms of just moving it forward for further discussion to the budget process, I'm certainly in favor of it.
Counselor McKay.
Thank you. Um, I, I would, I, I think moving it, I think the work that's gone in already is, is great. I think that it's got great potential. If we get some of these questions answered and figure out all the pieces and how that would work together. Preventative is always better than reactive. So I would agree with that. The only other question I would ask is if we're doing the white paper through, how can we involve our community members in it? I mean, we're saying that this is also for, for students, but there's got to be some bystanding that can also spill out into the rest of the community that the rest of us could certainly use as well. So how, how do we tie that together and really make it a gel package going into the community, not just for Academy students? Wonderful that, that's one part of the puzzle, but I think we can all learn something.
Yeah, and I'll take that as a, a direction from council to have an answer, uh, once I have a discussion perhaps with with Barb on, on how we can take white paper to community, to, to, to supporting the decision-making going forward. So, uh, great question and, and, and let me come back with a better answer.
Is this a new comment?
It's a, it's a question.
Let me. I'm very cognizant of our time because, uh, four of us have to, uh, motor to Halifax shortly afternoon. So, um, what I'm going to suggest, two things, I, Counselor Butler, Deputy Mayor, and I'm sure the rest of you have said that they have questions. I'm going to suggest that if you have questions, those be forwarded to Director Thomason. And I, so if we can do that, um, I have, I will in my few minutes comment, I, I think we benefit from having this presentation before the white paper because those questions that we have maybe can inform some of the things you write in, in the white paper. So I think and I do think we all have questions. I was happy to hear Sienna that you said, uh, that if, uh, that there would be some evaluation process before the four years. And I, I think that's really important. I, I think this is a fair bit of money for our town. Uh, and I think we, that there should be some kind of, uh, objective measures that we, you plan that this program achieves and that we can have a check-in maybe on an annual basis or certainly the first year and then maybe the third year and, and the fourth year. So if that can be built into the white paper, that would be appreciated. There have been a number of questions on EDI and we are about to deal with another report in a moment about EDI. I, I, one of my questions is how do all these EDI initiatives, including, uh, as Counselor Ingham said, the, uh, ongoing EDI initiatives with the Acadia fit into this? And is there some opportunity to to, to build on the EDI initiatives that might be in this program to deal with other things? Because again, we are all very conscious around this table of the, the large budget asks that are already coming to us before we've even seen next year's budget. So maybe some more information on that. And as Counselor McKay said, how does this fit into the MOU that we have with the KDA and, and does it fit in as it, is it one of those line items that, uh, we have asked for the new, the new MOU to say, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what Academy is doing, this is what the ASU is doing in some kind of measurable way for those. So those would be my comments. I'm sure Amanda has taken those down along. Well, of course, we have a recording and I would encourage council as you ruminate on this over the next few days. If you have other questions that you send those to, to Kelton and that will inform the white paper. If there are pressing other comments or questions, I don't want to cut those off, but I am very cognizant of the time. And if not, I would ask, uh, this is kind of a town and gown thing. So maybe I will ask Counselor Butler if he would read the motion and a reminder, this is not to approve today, but just to push it off to a budget discussion, uh, which will be informed by this white paper.
I move that committee of the whole forward the following motion to council for a decision that council approve in principle the town's participation in a four-year pilot project to support and establish the Acadia Red and Blue Crew with a commitment to an annual contribution in the amount of twenty five thousand. This request will be forwarded for budget consideration.
Hand a second, please. Counselor Elliott, second that. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Just on the wording of it, because it sounds like we are approving it and then it says this request will be forwarded to budget consideration. The wording seems
Should be approved that we forward it to budget.
Yeah, it, it does. Yeah, I feel like it's not in the right order, but as long as it's not holding us to anything, but the intent is there, then I can live with it.
That's the intent. We can make that friendly amendment if you wish to the motion, just to make it very clear that it's going forward to the budget process.
So what we are proving, if this is approved today, is that this goes into budget. We have not approved our contribution at this point. Great. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion is read, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post, so that is moved to budget discussion. Thank you, Sienna, Kelton and Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item is extension of council committee appointments. Am I going to assume that you'll do that?
Yeah, this one's pretty quick. So typically in November, we bring forward recommendations for the counselor appointments to all of our committees. And then in December, we come with recommendations for the, for the citizen appointments. We're still planning to come in December for the citizen appointments, but this RFD in front of you just requests that the status quo appointments for counselors remain in effect until the end of January, just to allow us to get through the election and have our seventh counselor. And then we can come forward in January with the recommendations with all seven so that we're not doing it now. And then when we have a new counselor having to rejig to allow for that person to have some council, some committee appointments. So it's just to extend from November to January with the current appointments for committees.
Counselor McKay, you have a question?
Um, yeah, I, I'm actually not in favor of this. I would actually think that we've been here for two years. We've done the same committees for two years. I think we can just put the second person, whoever whoever the chair will be, um, into a committee and that will be what it is. But uh, I feel like we've been here, we've been working hard on our committees and it's, if it's time for a change, I and then we don't put, and it delays everything because then in January, we all get our new committees, we get new schedules, um, you can't plan for next year. We're all in limbo until a, a chair is filled and, and I just don't think that's fair to the rest of us. So I would, I would prefer that we move them forward.
So you would oppose this? That's how we would do that. Uh, other comment? Counselor Butler.
Um, I'm, I'm sort of in, in the same, same situation because I look at, you know, we, we, we can't, we don't know when we're going to have to do this. So if this was to happen like next March, would we, would we wait?
It will happen in January.
No, I'm just saying, if, like, let's say a council resigned in March, when would we, we wouldn't wait that this long to do it. It would just, it happened on schedule. So I've just been appointed chair to a new committee and my first meeting is in two weeks. I don't want, like, I've done a lot of work to prepare for that meeting that in January, I may be now chair of another I don't want like, I've done a lot of work to prepare for that meeting that in January, I may be now chair of another committee. So all the work I've been putting into this, it's not my fault I was put chair to this. It was because we had to put somebody in that position. I don't know why we can't be put in those positions now. And then the new counselor coming in could just be either an alternate or you you can designate their role regardless of who they are and what their interests are. So that it can all be done now and we can move on with whatever committees were placed on.
Other comments?
Counselor Ingham? Um, yeah, I can, I can see your point, especially when you're saying how you're trying to plan out your year and you're putting in those meetings, especially in January and you're trying to figure out your other job. I get that. I don't have a strong opinion on either way on on this. So I'll listen to everybody else first and and make a a decision. I I do think that when I came, when we, the new counselors came on, I had a a meeting right away before you changed the the counselors. So I'm thinking if the new person comes in, that's what, six weeks for them, that they don't have any committees that were actually doing the work for them, right? Because the election is what, the tenth, am I correct? So if you change those positions that at the end of January, that means that person doesn't have any committees and we still are carrying more of the load because the counselor resigned. So I see that point, too.
I I would say. I haven't made any recommendations yet because anticipating this and waiting to see who the new person was, although I have got everybody's. Responses and there's there's a template already and then. So it wouldn't take long, but it won't come to council until council, which is the end, the eighteenth of November or some eighteen nineteenth of November. There will not, there aren't a lot of meetings in December and we could certainly do this the first of the first council meeting in January. So it's not like there are a whole lot of meetings. There will be whatever committees meet between the council meeting in November and the end of November. And then. As I say, we often don't meet in December, so you're probably talking a meeting. So that's just to put it in context, other other comments from council? Counselor Elliot?
Just to say that I feel kind of ambivalent like Counselor Ingham. Yeah, it would be nice to know, but on the other hand, I understand that. Kind of makes sense to frame it as down the road, so I don't really care either way.
Good, Mayor.
I I'm fine, I mean, I've just started a new committee and I I am wondering, there would be the meetings in December, but. In January, would there also be missing meetings in January?
Normally, I don't know when New Year's falls, but normally the cow in January is the second week of January. So presumably that would be when we would make appointments and then we could have a special meeting at the cow in January and your positions would take place. Immediately after that. So I'm I'm going to look at at Director Lake, I'm thinking of planning, we're going to have a couple of planning meetings. Definitely one, maybe two. In this in November. Probably will, we haven't one in December, so planning would be the big one. There is an RCMP, one RCMP meeting in December. There's, I know Remo is every. Quarterly, will you have one before the end of the year? No, so. It's January, so that one wouldn't be affected. Accessibility, you're meeting every month? No, every two months, so when is the next accessibility? So that would not be affected, what?
I have a source water meeting, which is the one that I'm now checking and there'll be probably two KPPT meetings before.
Right.
Well, I think it's one a month.
So not a lot of, and that's not to say people will be changed from the current committees, but so not a lot of meetings. My my view is that depending on who is the. The new counselor, their background will have big impact on whether we could put them in a more substantive committee or a committee that. Is, you know, much easier to learn on. So it's really, it's unfortunate that we don't know at this point, we might have a better sense even on November fifteenth. If it's an acclamation, then we we don't have to wait at all, that person will be there, so. So we may know by the time this comes to council in November, who our counselor is or who our counselor could be for sure, because the nominations will have closed. I'm sorry, Counselor McKay, I think her light was on first.
It it might not be a ton of of meetings, there'll be some, but we are setting meeting dates for the year going forward. For some of us that really do have to plan out, this is an extra two months delay on whether I can book a vacation or not or do this. Like I I need to know where these things fall in the schedules of balancing life. And I don't think it's fair to us to have to wait for someone else, because it really wasn't, wasn't, wasn't my decision. So I'm just, I I, because I like to plan ahead of time and I I don't think it's for. And a new counselor, whether they're. Have experience or not around this table or any other, they're still going to have to do a massive amount of uptake. So they're going to be thrown in the middle of a budget process, they're going to not have our strategic plan, they're going to have to do a council orientation. When the rest of us won't and we'll just keep moving along. So I think whether regardless of what their background is, I think they're going to have a massive uptake, so they may not need a substantial. Committee, because they're gonna, you know, they're going to play catch up to the rest of us for sure.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of a of a way to. If this is, if this is approved. Then when it comes to council, if we've had an acclamation, it's a, it doesn't matter, we can, we we can change it at council. If it is not approved, we still have that opportunity at council. At CAO, do you want? Add in, I think January, the the end of January is late. I I think that there is no reason why we can't before the, certainly before the end of December, if not in the middle of November, no. So making appointments before the end of December is. There's no reason that that can't happen.
So our council meetings on the fifteenth and we'll have a good idea, Barb just thought to think by four thirty of that day where we stand. That's the council meeting, so if your wish is to do the appointments now, we wouldn't lose any time if we bought a report direct to council. And it would get approved just in real time at council as opposed to committee, the whole council, so we'd still be on track. Typically, the appointments are still in effect that you're in currently until the end of November anyway, like it usually hands over December first. So we would, the the next opportunity we would have is December sixth. But if you wanted it in place, as per the normal practice, we could bring a report direct to council in two weeks' time. And we would have a better sense of how many folks were putting their names forward for the election and then you could debate it at that point. And if you decided you wanted to defer and do it later, you could, or you could pass it that evening with the appointments being recommended.
Good thing there.
Our choices would be November.
Council.
Council, which is the fifteenth or. December first.
It's December sixth would be Cal and we could do a special council meeting after that if if folks wanted. So either one could probably give you that information around what committees prior to the the calendar being finalized.
So if we're on until the end of November anyway, so maybe we should just go with that December sixth and then we will know whether it's acclamation, whether there's a, I mean, know a little bit.
So could we change this amendment to say until December sixth? Is that? Fit in the comfort zone? Jody, Mike, how's that sitting with you?
I'm just doing the math in my head, so December sixth and then we would just immediately, so that December meeting, you would be, boom, you'd be right in. And what was the other date, November?
Well, if if it's an acclamation, we'll know, we'll know at the end of the afternoon before council, so it could happen then. I could walk a report on if if with that evening.
Yep, so we we could just just say then at the latest December, whatever that is.
Six.
Yep, that's one.
And what I can, so that would mean an amendment to this motion. And certainly because you have all given me your wishes and I have had a chance to speak to a couple of you, because I, there's a little bit of frustrating. I I could certainly have a report to you before before the council meeting that says with the. With an opening on some committees, that's where we'll plug in the new person. Okay, so that means we're going to change that January. Thirty first to this December sixth, at the latest, it may happen before that. Are you okay with that mover and secondor? Are there any other comments? No, no, oh, I thought Mike, no, okay, sorry, that was the last.
I can though.
That was the last one, all right, I'm sorry, Counselor Butler, would you like to? So we don't have to amend it.
Um, in its committee of the whole for the following motion?
Yes.
I move that committee of the whole for the following motion to council, the council approved the council committee appointments remain status quo until December sixth, twenty twenty two, as outlined in this RFD.
Counselor, since I thought you did it before, see, I was prescient. All right, any other comments or questions? And as I say, I will commit to getting a a brief report out to you based on your input to me on your committee preferences. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's passed, thank you. Right, what time are we, does anybody need a break, a ten minute break, or do we want to do the next one, which I think will be, oh, tree policy, well, the next two are fairly. Do you want to plug ahead with tree policy? Okay.
Good morning, again, Mayor and Council, I'm just gonna. I can be really quick on this if you'd like. It's a. So the, this is building on the workshop that we held with Peter. And this report really is just trying to. Set up a project charter that we would bring as part of budget. The big learning is really around a tree inventory and sort of opportunity mapping that we would do. That work needs to be done sort of between June and Thanksgiving. So it is kind of nice timing in a way that it really fits into our budget process. We did provide a bit of an outline as to what a a final product could be, but. We certainly have a bit more work to do to refine this, bring it back in the form of a project charter and see how it fits in our work plan for next year. So I could just leave it there and take some questions. At this point.
Questions from council? Counselor Elliot, I thought you had, I thought you were going to have a question.
Thank you. I am, I've done a fair amount of research on on this issue. I've read Suzanne Simard's book, The Mother Tree. I'm reading this one by another Canadian scientist called To Speak For The Trees. This woman's concern is boreal forest, but also. Trees in general and having listened to the UN complain that we're not making any progress in terms of climate change, I feel kind of strongly about this. My sister in Aldergrove, B.C., had to pay a thousand dollars to take down a dead tree in her backyard and promise to replace it. And. That's not a street tree. We're talking, as far as I can tell, just street trees. So I was in touch after Peter was here with the group in Mahom Bay called Talking Trees. And they've had a tree bylaw in Mahom Bay since nineteen eighty five. The person I connected with said it doesn't have any teeth. The the committee, that committee of volunteers would like counsel to ask people to apply for a permit to cut a tree of a certain size. So if you're just culling small trees, that's, that's not an issue. Counsel didn't support that in Mahom Bay, but she says we are seeing so many trees cut on private land. Developers have a kind of scorched earth approach and they say they will replant. They look you in the eye and promise trees will be saved. They blame the workman with the chainsaw, it happens all the time. The town has to have a policy about protection of trees that goes into a development agreement, because trees are assets. And I think, given our climate situation, that's that's really important to consider. I first got looking at this when two Wolfville residents reached out due to clear cutting for development. And there's nothing to stop that, there's no process. So I believe that this should go beyond just looking at street trees and should consider the development implications of clear cutting.
Director Lake, do you have a comment?
So the, where we had sort of highlighted that public tree and rights of way in parks, that was more from an asset management approach from the town. Those questions that Counselor Elliott are raising should certainly be part of this. I've been involved with bylaws as well that talk about a certain size of tree. And a process around that, so built into the work plans sort of towards the bottom, I think there's a section called development. I can go to it here. New development, yeah. Yeah, so so how we are regulating should be part of this, just just not to, I I don't want to. Make this seem like it's diminished, but the the focus has been in our work with Peter is sort of taking stock of our own assets. And sort of leading by example in the rights of way and in the parks. It's more, it would be really difficult to do an inventory of all the trees in the town, private and public. So we're just trying to sort of hive this work off in a in a manageable chunk at the front end.
Um, I would just add, if I may, that Mahom Bay hired a student last summer to do an inventory. Wolfville had an inventory of street trees done, I don't know, thirty years ago, maybe, when David Slabotsky could speak to that history. But that record exists, so in in some ways we are a step ahead. And I suppose that would be a. A great thing for staff to look at as a as a grant application for twenty twenty three.
Uh, thank you for, thank you. So thanks for that, Counselor Elliot, I have a couple of concerns. Listening to Peter, not all trees can be saved or should they be saved? So when I'm looking at some of the storms that we've had in the last little while and I'm looking at some of the streets and the branches and and oftentimes, you know, Nova Scotia Power will say, maybe that tree was thin down, that's at the end of its life. So could we add to to this, looking around at some trees that just aren't in good shape, because not every tree can be saved and thinning some out especially? And I think Counselor Elliott and I have talked about, you know, walking through the trails that some of the forests need to be thinned out too for other reasons. So can we look at, can we actually look at that, too? And just speaking from the last storm, my neighbors had commented, my my neighbor on the corner of Orchard, she paid three thousand dollars to get her willow tree taken down, right? She didn't want it taken down, but there's no, there's no choice. So willows have that, you know, ability in the wind and so those are some of the trees that are taken down. So can we look at, can we go looking at some trees that just can't be saved and maybe thinning out a little bit on certain streets? And I'm and I am speaking on Orchard, because that's where I live and I've had people come up to me and say, you know, can we thin this out? And I'm sure there's other streets, too, so can we have that added on that, too?
Yeah, the the maintenance and being more proactive with that has been part of our discussion with Peter and he works actively with the Urban Forest Group in HRM, which has has the same challenge.
Yes.
But yeah, I don't know if Kelton wanted to add anything to that, but that's certainly part of what we've been talking about and will form part of this work.
Yeah, so basically ditto to what Counselor Ingham said, I had pretty much the same thought, it was, I I agree with Counselor Ingham. No clear cutting, that's certainly. Excruciatingly problematic, but and it's about keeping our trees that we do have healthy. I only know it from a golf course standpoint, when you start to clean them all out and how how nice those trees grow and how strong, much stronger they are. And. And it's, it's actually quite remarkable to watch them, it's really quite neat, not that I know a whole lot about trees, but also the storms, that was, that was, I was curious. Not that I know a whole lot about trees, but also the storms, that was, that was, I was curious about that, so thanks.
I think this is a very important issue for our community. And I I enjoyed reading this report. I guess what came to my mind is and and Counselor Elliott alluded to the Mahone Bay Tree Committee and how ineffective it was, I guess. But I'm just wondering whether this is something that we would like to look at and try to, I mean, I don't know how we create council committees or create, but I think there's an opportunity here. We don't. Okay, well, I just.
Often created committees because they were somebody's favorite, and then we had to end up getting rid of the committee. So I, I don't know if we need a committee for this, but it could be a council recommendation.
Or an advisory group or something, because I think there's an opportunity here to bring in not just Peter, people like Peter, but there's an awful lot of expertise and interest in our community of people who would like an avenue, you know, a way to maybe work together and and support this whole whole issue in a productive, constructive way. And whether we can create an entity that would allow for that and work with with stuff, I'm not sure, I'm just, I I take your point that, you know, we can't create a committee for every, everything, but I think this is a pretty big one. And and to see things kind of handled, just to avoid handling it in piecemeal way, so that there is a way of depositing all of these different perspectives of trees we can keep, trees we shouldn't keep, you know, just to create that also that broader maybe community understanding of, you know, what we need to do with respect to trees in our town.
Counselor Elliott?
If you will indulge me, one more comment. Okay, Woolfield used to have a tree committee back in the days of Dutch elm disease. And there were passionate people on it like Joan Bromley, who was, who sat on council. And Sam Vander Cluit was on that too, Professor at Acadia, and and that problem hasn't gone away. I mean, the cemetery up on the hill is facing huge costs for for arborist service because of the number of Dutch elms out there. So that's still a community thing. Twenty years ago, when Bob Sted was mayor, we had, we had John Stewart come and set up the Boy Scouts to go around town and plant a whack of trees. And it didn't cost us anything because we won awards. And that was free for the town. So so there there are ways, if you involve the community, as the deputy mayor said, whether it's an advisory group or whatever, to be proactive and not dump it all in the hands of the staff. So I think that's a priority.
I would just mention that when we have a community committee or any committee, it still ends up in the hands of the staff, so it doesn't, it doesn't preclude that, and I think that's why we called some of our committees. So can I ask a question? Is, as long as I have been on council, we have wanted a tree policy. Is this moving towards a tree policy? First question?
Yes.
Yes. A second question, I do take your, the point of the this is trees on public property, except those trees that are on new development, which presumably is private property. I do take Counselor Elliott's point about trees on private property that is already developed. I can't see problems with that, and I would be very concerned. My neighbor, just the last four days, we've been watching an enormous tree come down. None of us wanted the tree to come down, but every time we have a storm, a piece of it hits one of our houses, and it was just a matter of, it was a Carolina poplar, one of the messiest trees I've ever seen in my life, and every time there's a storm, somebody's house or clothesline gets destroyed. So I wouldn't like to have a policy that everybody who wants to take a tree down has to pay a thousand dollars because, you know, as I think she paid four thousand dollars to get her tree down, so it's not cheap and nobody does it, that that kind of thing without a good reason, but I do see some. Certainly, when I was with the city of Burlington, we cut a tree that was a messy tree, but we had to, didn't cost us money. We had to take it down, but we did have to replant a tree on our property of a of a reasonable size. And we could choose from one that was not such a messy tree, so I don't know, I just maybe you could take that under advisement, Director Lake, that there does seem to be some interest on council for some aspects of trees on public, on private property to be considered. And again, not wanting to preclude council's wishes, but I just know that we have recently called committees because it does take a lot of staff time for those committees, so, but maybe in your thinking, you will think about whether that's appropriate, either an ad hoc, like a task force, somebody to help in the short term, or whether it's something long term, but we would look for staff's recommendation around that. Does that, Counselor Elliott, with that? Dash and forth. Yeah, yeah, okay, so that would, that would meet your interest.
Sure, I think the good thing about bringing something like this early before the budget process is this is going to involve additional capacity and additional costs. So two things that we don't have right now. So I think by bringing it into the budget, you can put that up against other priorities, and then we can see where things land. And sort of that may help define the scope a bit, particularly with something like like a tree policy or tree work on the operating side. It's going to take us many years to accomplish this, so it might be something we can also phase in.
Other comments or questions from council?
I just want to say one thing, so twenty years ago today, I moved to Woolfield. And for fourteen and a half years, I lived with Bob in his basement apartment. In the first day, Bob, we sat out under the big tree that was on the property, and he was talking about his property, how much he loved his property. And that tree's not there anymore. And reading this, it was, I'm glad, thank you for mentioning him within the report because it it was such a passion. I mean, I can't, maybe hours, if I had a nickel for every hour, we talked about trees and leaves and hedges and symmetry. It was really great. I love that this is still in discussion. I love that it is still moving forward. It really, it actually means a lot to me that something is this important, because it was always very important to, very important people to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. But there is no motion, so if there are no more questions or comments from council or from staff, then we can move on. I ask again, do we want ten minute break? Or do we want to go into diversity? You're good, anybody need, all right. After, okay, we will have a break after diversity. All right. All right. Who is going to lead us through the diversity?
I am, I'm just gonna grab the mouse. So both this RFD and the one on the REN, both stem out of direction from council in the twenty twenty one, twenty two budget process. So it's taken a little bit of time to get it back in front of you, primarily because a lot of the focus on the regional front has been on the K T A and Valley Waste Files. So there's only so much time in the day between the C A O. So finally, this fall, we were able to turn our minds and get these two drafted to bring in front of you. So both this one and the REN one, just to to remind you, money was put earmarked in the budget so that council, if they so chose, could participate in this fiscal year. And this one actually had a motion that directed me to work with my other C A O counterparts to come back with the draft. I M S A for your consideration. And that really came out of the presentation that Brittany made to council back in February Committee of the Whole in twenty twenty two. So I just want to, I should say twenty two, twenty three budget, I'm, my, the years are flying by too quickly. So I'm just going to walk through this for you and some of the key points. So Scott Conrod and I had been going back and forth on the draft M S A that you see in front of you. It's very similar to the one that you would have approved for Remo. And originally, when we were looking at this, we really liked that model, Remo's something that's worked really well for the four municipalities to participate in. And Woolfield has served as the host unit for that service. And so this was really done with that in mind, where Kings County would be the host unit for the diversity file. You will note that back in February, we weren't sure who was going to be interested in participating. And Borough and Penfle, for different reasons, have opted not to participate. So it ended up just being the two units that have worked together to to bring this forward. So that is a consideration that you didn't have as information when you discussed this in February. But you'll see there's a lot of similarities to the Remo agreement in this. Plus, through the work that we've done collaboratively with the working group that was established to review all of our I M S As, we did have some legal work done just to clean up some of the standard contract clauses that are, should be in all of our I M S As, particularly around dispute resolution and some of other key clauses. So you'll see in this one, that is also reflected from some of the work that's been done. So the biggest thing, I think everybody's pretty familiar with what the ask was when Brittany came. I think Kings County has been working on the diversity file for a number of years. They've developed a strategy for belonging, which did not contemplate the towns in any meaningful way. It really focused on their municipality. And they did strike the Diversity Kings Committee sort of around the same time, and they've really been trying to move forward on the file. They've also been trying to figure out how to best do the service delivery. They did have one diversity specialist who has since left, and they're in the process now of hiring two with the view that if they were to provide the service beyond Kings, there would be more capacity required for them to be able to do that adequately. So the first point I'd like to make is that currently Woolfield is not reflected in that strategy for belonging. So one of the first tasks, I guess, if this moves forward, would be that Kings County would work with Woolfield, with council, with the community, with Acadia, and any other stakeholders that are identified, to really determine what the priorities for Woolfield are so that we are an equal part of that strategy for belonging, and we aren't just an afterthought, because right now, clearly, we're not part of that. So that would be one of the the biggest pieces. I've referenced Brittany's presentation, in case anyone wanted to go back and and just refresh yourself on on what she had in that. She did have a couple slides that really spoke to the importance of why Kings County felt they wanted to get involved in this file. And like I said, they have been working on this for a number of years. So in terms of the I M S A, it would just be Kings County and Woolfield if it was to move forward. It would be a host unit model, so Kings County would be responsible for providing the service to us. We would be responsible to appoint a staff person that would be a liaison to Kings County. And the C A O is defined as being Scott, that would be really responsible for the program. But there is a role that I would be interfacing with him and be able to be a little bit informed as we go through. But the liaison on the staff side would definitely have a formal role. The existing Diversity Kings Committee would cease to exist, and there would be a new committee struck per the terms of reference that you see in front of you, that would really be Woolfield and the County of Kings driven. The councils of both of those municipalities would make recommendations to the committee on the appointments, and they would be from, they potentially from Kings County, not just Woolfield and the County of Kings proper. But they would certainly be brought forward by the two councils, and Diversity Kings would cease to exist. So just want to be clear on that front. One of the biggest things that I think council needs to be aware of is it is for a five year term. And after that, it renews annually, but when you look at the clause, because they're hiring staff, they do contemplate that if we wanted to get out within the five years, we're still going to be on the hook financially. So you really need to think about this as a five year commitment. And I've pointed that out in the R F D, after which there's no obligation, but it does carry over year to year after that. So I just wanted to point that out because if we withdraw, we are still responsible for our portion of of the cost. So that is a key consideration that needs to be top of mind. So there was a few things that have come out of some recent discussions, some at the staff level and some at the council level. One is around the role of the Accessibility Committee, and one of the municipalities that decided not to move forward with this partnership really is relying on their Accessibility Committee to do their E D I work. Ours, to this point, hasn't really done a whole lot on the E D I file. There are some elements in our accessibility plan that speak to E D I. But that committee really, from our view, is is legislated. It's got some specific deliverables that it must achieve through legislation, and our plan is in place. It's not to say that some E D I work couldn't and shouldn't be part of that committee's scope. But I would see it as as limited likely in how that would be able to be managed by that committee. I certainly think the Accessibility Committee would be a key stakeholder if this was to move forward, particularly as we develop the priorities for Woolfield, but wouldn't necessarily be a replacement for the Diversity Committee more broadly, because it does have a different function and legislative requirements behind it. The partnership with Acadia is also something that's come up a few times, and you saw in your presentation this morning. There's, there's a lot of opportunity for the town and for our residents to partner with Acadia and leverage resources for E D I work. It's something that came up when council had their discussion on the M O U, that it may be something that could be foundational. To this point, we haven't really seen a lot of success doing that. There's been a lot of discussion, and I think doors are opening and would be hopeful that that will happen. I don't think that this needs to be one or the other. It really depends on where council wants to go with it. I do think that Acadia is a key stakeholder, again, that needs to be engaged as part of setting our priorities. And I think Acadia could directly benefit from the work of Diversity Kings. But having said that, I, you know, I do think there's some things that the town corporate can do with Acadia, with or without the I M S A in place. And that's something that likely will be looked at as part of the M O U. Just to date, I just want to be very clear, we haven't really been able to move the needle on that front, and we have tried a number of times to do some specific projects, and whether it's resource constraints, or or I don't know really what the the holdup has been, but it's been challenging to date. So I just wanted to note that. And then internal resources, you know, certainly when I've talked to some of our internal staff, there's a lot of passion for E D I on staff right now, and I think a lot of folks would like to dive in headfirst on our own and and do things on, you know, at a staff level. We're really tapped out right now from a capacity perspective. I'm not so sure that we would have the resources to move the file much further than we have without a different approach. And we'll get into the dollars later and what that might mean. But looking at this and partly why I made the recommendation that I did around the positive motion going forward was that if this is a priority for council and you want to move forward on the diversity file, feel like this is a really great way to do it for the value and the cost that you would get. We would have access to two diverse, diversity specialists that would be able to service us. And we would be able to have those resources behind us that the county could bring to the table that we just simply don't have here in Woolfield right now. Lot of interest, though, internally of of being involved. And then the committee representation, this is just if this does move forward, this motion is there in case. And that's just to say, and again, this may all change as we go through our committee discussion, but Counselor Ingham has been the representative on Diversity Kings. And just for simplicity, the recommendation would be, at least until another change is made, this committee would just replace that one, and Diversity Kings will no longer be in play. So the the financial implications, so as I had mentioned, we had put some money in the budget this year on council's direction in case. Council wanted to go forward with this. So for this fiscal year, if you did want to sign on to the I M S A, our contribution would be just over fifteen thousand. So we do have money in the budget to cover that if it moves forward. And you'll see here that the focus for the remainder of this fiscal year is to get those two diversity specialists in place. My understanding is interviews had been done. They haven't hired yet. They're in that process now. There would be a committee work plan developed. We have to get the committee up and running, and that will also require council to make recommendations for representation. And then the work would start on the engagement and consultation piece for the Woolfield specific actions and priorities, which are not in the plan right now. Just want to be very clear, it's very much not reflective of any town, including Woolfield. And then there's two events that are coming up, African Heritage Month and International Women's Day, where the diversity specialists would work with our teams and would be doing some programming and promotion around that. So that gets us to the end of March. And then there would be another work plan that would be submitted as per the I M S A that would come to council. And that's detailed in the I M S A, there's obligations on the county side to actually come back with with the plan for council's consideration. So after this inaugural year, the annual budget is just under two hundred thousand dollars. And you'll see there that our share is thirty six thousand and change, which is nineteen percent of the total budget. When you would have seen the original budget, we were at a lower percentage, it was fourteen percent. And that's because it was contemplated that Borough and Penfle would be in. So the county did some prorating that both of us absorbed some of the costs that would have been associated with those two units. And that's why the number is different than what you would have seen in in February. So we currently had put a thirty thousand dollar. So we currently had put a thirty thousand dollar allotment for regional IMSA initiatives, which included that diversity piece. The other piece was we weren't sure if we were going to do something regionally with climate change. That's not moving forward at this point. So there is enough in this year's budget to cover this. If you did want to move forward, go forward. The commitment would be the annual amount would have to be something that would be provided for in the budget amount with any CPI escalations. And I don't know, Mike, if you want to add anything to that piece on the financial.
I don't think there's a lot of details. I think the summary there indicates so that moving into next year, it's the thirty six, thirty seven thousand dollar contribution compared to the thirty thousand that's in the budget currently. So it's not a large increase in absolute dollars. So it's in that scale that usually council can manage. But that would be the key change is we go from thirty thousand dollars in the current year's budget to, I would round that to thirty seven thousand on a go forward basis. And and that would be the sort of dynamic that we'd be discussing once we get into the operating budget.
So it's here in front of you for your consideration. Obviously, you cannot not to participate in it, or you can recommend changes back to the county. Where it's just the two of us, any changes to the IMSA might be a little bit easier to contemplate on the front end than if we had four partners. But here for consideration. And the reason that, as I mentioned at the beginning, that this and the rent are here now and not as part of budget process for this upcoming fiscal years, because it was already approved in this current year's budget and requested it come back. So not intended to be a one off, but that's why it's here in advance of any future budget discussions that will start happening in November.
Thank you, CAO. Comments or questions, Deputy Mayor?
Have a question. You earlier on in your presentation, CEO, said that we would be committing to five years. And even if we wanted to pull out, say, after year two, we would still have to pay those five years regardless. So to be honest, that's a bit of a concern for me. But the other question I have, if we go ahead with what we've already committed to for this year, does that lock us into that five year framework type rate?
It would if we sign the IMSA, we're committed for the five years. I I don't think we could move forward just from now until March thirty first without the longer term commitment. And yes, the clause is, if you look at the term and termination clauses, it commences on the date of execution. It would expire March thirty first, twenty twenty seven, and then carry over every year after that. But there is a clause that says Wolfville may choose to terminate its participation in this agreement prior to the end of the term. Such early terminations will be subject to Wolfville paying its prorated share of annualized costs as set out in schedules B and C, calculated from the date of termination to the end of term, and remains responsible for a share of liabilities incurred up to the date of the withdrawal. So you're still on the hook for for some costs. So I would look at this as being a five year commitment if you're.
Yeah, I had this, one of the same concerns as the deputy mayor. And and I'd also, it doesn't feel like an interminable services agreement anymore when there's only two of us, it's a partnership. So it's it's sort of lost its luster a little bit to me when it when everyone sort of it didn't come together. I wonder if we, you know, I mean, and the county will have to do a great deal of work to include us in that strategy because they have already done all of theirs and are looking at it. So I I don't know how that would fare out. I think a lot of our diversity comes from Acadia being in in the center of town as well. So again, without an MOU, I I don't know what that looks like because we already had that discussion too. I just feel like the water in the beach has really changed from this first discussion, not that they're not doing a great job. And to see Diversity Kings, I think, I mean, I often hear counseling them how how passionate and how great a committee that is to lose it because the diversity doesn't and the challenges with, you know, inclusion don't stop at our imaginary borders at the end of our town. So hearing, I can only imagine the stories you hear and the shared experiences from all the towns and counties around us at that meeting would be. It's just great information shared and stories and lessons learned and all of those things. So at this time, I'm I'm struggling with it the way it is right now. I'm not sure there's a question there or just one of those like. It's it it, I guess, lots of lots of questions because I don't know what else we can do. But this one doesn't seem right for the moment.
Councilor Ingham? Yes, I I do hear your concerns. I mean, we have to look at everything, you know. This committee is a real human factor, there's real human factor in this. And I look at all the other IMSA agreements, you know, that that we have with Remo Valley Waste and and Ren possibly. And there's not that human factor. So there's history, there's people's stories, there's there's many things. And diversity and inclusion, it it totally involves constant work. So I see why the staff is really excited about it because we don't have an expert here in Wolfville. We're we're not utilizing Acadia, which is something in the MOU that we really need to have. And so I'm not struggling with the value of this at all because I I believe it's totally valuable. But you have to look at the whole package and and the financial aspects and where's Acadia fit into this. But it's 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 not, this this type of work is not checkboxes, like it might be with something else, right? And we just looked at the tree policy and how passionate people are about trees. Well, people are passionate about humans too, right? That's that's how we build relationships, that's how we converse and everything like that. I was, I have been on the committee for two years, so I have been a part of the, you know, the strategy in building the plan. And yeah, and so I guess I I do struggle with, I guess, one question that I would have here is that the host unit model would be that the the County of Kings is the host. And so because Burwick and Kenful opt out of this, it's just Wolfville. So when you're talking that it it switches over to inclusive kings, does that mean that there's no committee members from Burwick or Kenful on this anymore? It's just Wolfville and the municipality?
They they could be from anywhere, but it would be in Kings County. And Scott was really careful to define that. We've gone back and forth to try to ensure that that language is there, that the option for somebody from Burwick and Kenful can be placed on the committee. But the recommendations for who populates that committee would come from this council and their council. It wouldn't be from the from Kenful or Burwick's council. So the committee that is outlined in Schedule A would replace the existing Diversity Kings Committee. And it would be structured in the way that it's outlined. So there would be certain representatives that represent certain groups. And all of the recommendations come from the two councils to populate it. So one would wind down, they they County of Kings doesn't want to have two committees, and they want this committee to really work intricately with both councils to be able to to move forward on this file. So it's structured in a different way, but still intended to be representative. But you may find that there's a great person from Kenful that should be on the committee. And this doesn't preclude that from happening.
Okay. I know. And so when I'm looking at all the pillars on here, there, you know, they they fall into line with, you know, our strategic plan and, you know, so socioeconomic and community wellness, just like the last presentation that we had from the red and blue, right? So we, again, we don't have a specialist on this. And I was looking at how much it costs for, you know, for the the county to have a specialist. It's probably, you know, seventy plus thousand dollars a year. So I'm thinking, okay, here we have, we have this, you know, at half the amount of cost. And, you know, it'll be a little wide ranging. But it it disappoints me that we don't have this with Acadia. Like, I really feel like we need to have a really strong partnership with Acadia on this. They have their only, you know, diversity and inclusion department themselves, they have a bunch of them. Like, and I and I get that you have, you know, that we need to write this into the MOU. It's just, I I feel very strongly about having something for Wolfville because we just don't have that specialist. I don't see that it's going to have a strong core, like, there'll be some correlation with accessibility, but it's not as strong as you may think, right? We still don't have, and we we have Kelton who is who is trained in recant and training. We don't also have an accessibility, you know, expert either, per se. So to to have to merge these together would be beneficial to me. Let's see if I have anything else written down. I guess I I do agree with Jody how it was presented to us in February. And we were, you know, we, I think the ask was twenty three, twenty five thousand. And so, and you know, not fit in with the budget, as you say, thirty thousand, so where's the extra money coming from? Is this something that we would have to start like right away, like not pay the fifteen thousand and just go into it from the five years instead of the proactive one? I don't know, I mean, I just think it's worth a little bit more discussion since it's it is the human factor, it's different than all the other IMSAs. And I just want to put that out there, that, you know, the the history, the lived experiences, all of that stuff comes into play. And our community, you know, we want everybody to be welcome in Wolfville. And we just don't have that expertise. But again, I struggle because really do need to be working with Acadia. But we also need to have a diversity specialist that's working in Wolfville, I really feel. So there's my struggle.
Any comments from this side?
Okay, thank you. I listened to Erin and I'm I'm feeling that that's the direction that you see we should be going in. But then in the back of my mind, I'm going thirty seven thousand dollars a year. Couldn't we find somebody young and passionate to hire just for Wolfville? Like, I don't know what the pros and cons are of that possibility would be. Yeah, I'm I'm of two minds, so.
I'm I'm reading all of the motions as one, but I was actually kind of hoping they would be, they are separate thing. Okay. I I struggled very little with passing my authorization to the mayor and say, oh, to sign this. I I am not in favor of signing it. Once not all partners were included, it just didn't feel right. You know, I'm assuming that the town of Burwick, I'm hoping the town of Burwick and the town of Wolfville have additional plans in place so that they are still doing something, which is wonderful. We we do, as as Councilor McKay pointed out, we have, we have multiple demographics in Wolfville, including the university, which the municipality of Kings does not have. The town of Kenful has the Community College, which I know that they have their own plans in place. So we we do have a particular piece of infrastructure in town that we need to be a partner with as opposed to outside partners. So I think within the town of Wolfville, it'd be great to have a diversity wolf or a something. I'm I actually, in reading the report, just really longed for the day when we could all have an EDI component as part of every single committee. If you look at every committee, there is an EDI component that could be part of audit, of of source water, everything, everyone can be connected to our committees with an EDI component within. So if it's, instead of having a separate committee to focus on that, within each of our committees, there could just be a line of how we could be more equal and inclusive and and diverse within each of those. So, yes, I am, I am not in favor of going forward. Just between the two parties, it just didn't really feel like everyone was coming to the table. And the amount of money I feel like could be put towards other things.
I did not see who had went first, so.
I think you did.
Go ahead, Councilor McKay.
Question. Hearing the the passion around the table too, I think it sounds like we want one of our own. Whether, so my question is, there's thirty six thousand dollars in the budget. I have, I really don't know what diversity specialist says here on this line item, a hundred thousand dollars. And I guessing that's for two.
More than that, yeah.
So so there was two, and we had someone that, because we're also going to appoint one of our staff members to be a liaison. So there's going to be time spent by that individual on diversity. So what does that look like from a staffing perspective? Is it one person who then that person is now our diversity specialist, who can work with Acadia and the County of Kings? And then we don't need to pull something off someone else's desk because it would be potentially off the corner of someone else's desk that we have right now. And I'm hearing that capacity is an issue. So we're a small unit, so how does? That's a struggle because taking them away from their, you know, the the job that they were hired to do is also going to be very difficult. And then we won't get. I don't think we'll get the outcomes we want to either if someone's doing it off the corner of their desk.
Councilor Ingham? Oh, sorry, me too. Yeah, so I think in response to how much that they get paid, thirty seven thousand would be a part would be a part time job for an EDI. Like, if when you look at the hourly rate, I think it was advertised, and Erin, you might be able to correct me, at maybe, you know, thirty five to forty dollars an hour. So if that's full time, we're looking at, you know, seventy to eighty thousand dollars. So thirty seven thousand would be a part time person, which, you know, is better than what we have now. If you could find them in and maybe somebody that's working at Acadia or they want to hire somebody at Acadia that we can, they can work part time at Acadia and they can work part time here. I do feel strongly that we do need something and listening from Erin and the staff and how excited they were at this, that makes me excited also. And and just in response to your comment, Counselor Butler, about can we not have this on the audit committee? Can we not have this on other committees? Here's the thing, if you're not, if you're not invested in it, you're not committed to it, and it's not purposeful, it's not going to happen. So we need to have somebody at the helm to make it happen and to have people accountable. Because everybody in this, everybody in diversity inclusion is on their own journey, right? And so if you don't have somebody at the helm, it's just, we just can't take it to audit and say, okay, let's be purposeful in this. You know what I mean? We need to have somebody at the helm. And then I look at, I look at accessibility and how, when we make our plan, plan. It has to be really plain language so everybody understands it. And then, you know, at at the Diversity Kings, we talked about, they talked about going through all their policies and decolonization or whatever, taking out words and everything. And that's something that we should probably do on on as a staff level and council level to make sure that they're in line with things too, right? So how do how do we know how to do that in a in a meaningful way and in a way that's appropriate to to be totally inclusive? So I I don't know where we go from here, but I I'm getting the sense that we need something. Maybe this isn't the right direction, but we do need something. So I'll throw it back out there for somebody else.
Okay, yeah, I I am not in favor of this this policy. For many of the reasons that have been said, I think when we had our first discussion back in February, we did understand it was an intermunicipal service agreement that all of our municipalities would be part of part of this to have dropped out. I am very conscious of this budget amount of the other, we still have another one coming that will go forward to to budget. But I'm also I'm also very conscious that I anticipate the next few years will be very difficult for our general budget. I mean, we just have to look at all the, you know, the cost of food, the cost of gas, the cost of of CPI going up, the cost of some of the projects that we have, that we have somewhat committed to. I'm very, I'm very conscious that this is going to be a tough budget year. So just from a dollar point of view, it concerns me. It concerns me that we are making an approval today as opposed to putting forward to budget, which gives me a level of comfort. Because when we just put the red and blue into budget, we will look at that relative to everything else that's on our plate and how much we want to put the the tax rate up. I remind council, this is almost one one cent on the tax rate. The red and blue is a little more than half a cent on a tax rate. So so that, from a fiscal perspective, that concerns me. I absolutely agree that, and I know I take the CAO to heart, we have not got from Acadia what we want in the MOU. But gosh darn it, we are going to do that in the next, in the next one. We have such tremendous resources in Acadia. And I want to do something to bring Acadia to the table. I don't want to give Acadia an opportunity not to come because we have done something else. And the other thing I would, I am concerned about the five years, even more so than the thirty eight, thirty seven thousand. If we had that thirty seven thousand in our own tent, we can do it for a year and not do it the next year, but we could do things with that money. I looked at some of the list of the two events, that celebration of Black Heritage Month, the International Women's Day. I would give, this is my feeling, I would give money to the museum. I would give them five or ten thousand dollars and say, Ken, is this something you can do for us? If we do go ahead with the red and blue team, we've talked about CNA EDI there. I don't know exactly what that means in terms of what that group is going to do. But could we put another five thousand dollars into that and meet some of our needs? Mike, you talked about, Counselor Butler, sorry, you talked about and Counselor Ingham talked about the wording in our policies. Somebody can. Somebody can come in and take a look at our policies and say, are there words that shouldn't be in here or things we need to do to be more inclusive? We could take that pot of money, should we want to use it, and we could use it, but maybe next year, if we are have the following year, if a council is having real financial troubles, they are not absolutely committed to that, the way we are with this. So for all those reasons, and I absolutely, Councilor Ingham, I agree with what you say. And that's what makes this one hard, because it is a human story. It is something that we've said in our, in our strategic plan. This is important to us. It is important to us. I don't think this is the way that we get the best bang for our thirty seven thousand dollars. And I am really fearful that it commits us over a long term, when, when I just know the next few years on budget are going to be very tough, and we're going to have to make some really tough decisions, none of which I'm sure we want to make. So that's, that is my, I won't be voting in support of this. Councilor Ingham?
Yeah, so I'm hearing from the table, I'm just hearing from everybody how important this work is, number one. Number two, I think we're all struggling with the five-year commitment, right? So that, that seems to be, is there any, any way that we can, we maybe punt this to budget, but maybe talk about taking it down just from year to year, or how can, how can we do, how can we do this? I just don't want to leave it that we're not doing anything. Do you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's like, we can say that we're going to have an MOU with Acadia. Right now, we don't have what we want, and will we get what we want? Do you know what I mean? So where, where can we go from here? Because I'm getting the sense around the table that this, how it's written is not agreeable to, to the counselors. And I, and I, I totally understand that. But where do we go from here?
So if there's not interest in pursuing the option of working with Kings County under IMSA, then I think staff will have to come back and provide counsel with some other options of what we might be able to do internally or with Acadia or with other partners we haven't even identified yet. If council was interested in working with Kings County, but the stumbling block is the five-year term, that could be something you could give me direction to go back to the county and say, we need it shorter, we need it two, we need it three, we need it something different for consideration. But if that's not the only stumbling block, if the whole structure of it's not something palatable to council, then that's probably a moot point. So it's really what the stumbling block is. And if it doesn't pass, then I would say that we would come back through the budget process and give some options for council as to how we might move forward on this file. Not in partnership with Kings County.
So could I just ask a question? Is the stumbling block simply the, the term, or are there other stumbling blocks? Counsel, Deputy Mayor?
I think for me, is the fact that the other municipalities are not involved, but also I, I just don't know how effective this would be for us. And I, I have questions about the way it's structured. You know, on the one hand, I, I know it's, this is a very important issue. There's no, I don't think there's anybody who is not on that page in terms of how important it is. And I think we need to know what we should be doing. And I'm not, I don't feel really comfortable that this structure will be responding to Wolfville needs in the kind of detail and immediacy that would be very helpful, to be honest. I, you know, I feel like I'm putting money into a pot, or we would be putting money into a pot, and I, I don't know how much control we would have. And it's kind of another one of those brass to commit, brass to. And, and this is different from some of the other things that we contribute. It's very different where, you know, we're contributing to to Remo, or we're contributing to the value way, you know, we see concrete things. And this is a difficult issue to get those concrete, to, to identify what those concrete benefits would be. But I'd like a bit more sort of tangible stuff before I would be willing to commit this, and especially committed to five years. And then, you know, two years later, think, well, we're not happy with it, but we really can't do anything about it.
So your answer to my question, is this more than term is yes?
Yes, sorry.
Councilor Ingham?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm not trying to fight one way or the other. I'm trying to fight for what are we going to have in Wolfville, right? So if we, if we don't vote this, then it's like, where are we going to go from here? Because working with Acadia, that's not going to be immediate. That was already in the RFD that we continue to work with Acadia. So is there any way that we could do, and I'm hearing the budget is a big issue in moving?
I think CAO said that we could direct this.
Yeah, no.
Bring something back.
Yeah, that's not the question. So the question would be, if to, instead of just dismissing this, is there any way we could say to hold off for two years, have this as a pilot project, and then hold off until we actually get something? Because what, you know, staff working on it, what if it's a year, or what if it's two years down the road that we don't have anything? So this would be a way to sort of get us, get the ball rolling, and then move from there.
So the question was, could you look at this as a pilot term?
Five years seems to be a big, you know, factor around the table for sure. Yeah, and one issue, and I hear, I hear the other things, but my concern is is that if we say no to this, and, and I understand all the reasonings, because I'm a council, I have to look at the big picture, I have to look at financial, I have to look at what's best for Wolfville. But I also have to know that this is actually offered to us right now. And this is something that we need to get started on working now. It's not something that we should be working on, just like the tree policy. Is it going to be put to the backbench? So how, and I understand that you said staff would be working on it, but is it worth saying, can we start off here for two years or whatever? And then, I don't know. I'm just throwing out there.
Please do. I think our staff person that we would be electing to work with Kings County would be more advisory in nature, not to roll up the sleeves and get the work done itself to an earlier point that I think Councilor McKay made is, you know, it would be not so much corner of our desk, but the expectation would be that our staff would be doing the work. It would be more check-in, are we going in the right direction, you know, give some advice. If it was a pilot, again, that comes down to, is it just the term? Because I think that is something that we could go back and have a conversation with the county about if this structure works for council, and if it doesn't, then there's, there's no point. I think for the county, they're probably looking at, as they're making the commitment to the staff people, and so they wanted a bit of assurance that we were in it for the longer term. And you'll see, even with the Ren one that's coming up, it's now a three-year commitment before you can get out, because it was the same kind of issue and concern that the Ren had, is that people were flipping in and out, and there was no continuity in staff. So likely, that's, that's why the five-year term. But would they be open to a shorter term, potentially? I haven't had that conversation with Scott. It would really depend on if there was a willingness for council to go forward with the model. That certainly could go back and have it if that was the direction.
Councilor McKay. And I understand those points, and regardless, when you're hiring staff, you don't know if they're staying or not anyway. So it's one of those things that we, it's an unknown for us all regardless. So it's more for, so yes, it's more than just the five-year term for me. There's other aspects. And I hear Councilor Ingham, so if we say if the will is to say no to this as it is, it is. There were six things that are on there. But we could, as an action plan, say, we are going to, we would ask staff to come back with an engagement policy, or engagement and consult, consultation plan specific to Wolfville action plan. So we could do an engagement piece. And we could hire or internally do Plan and Celebrate African Heritage Month, and Plan and Celebrate International Women's Day. And say, that's what we're going to action in this year, in this year's budget, at X amount of dollars. And then from there, maybe after our consultation package, we have something come back to us for the next budget to say, this is really what we've heard, this is really what we want to do, and we can put something as a, as a longer-term goal in place. So we have immediate action, we have a lot of plan. But we're not constrained by a five-year plan, and it's ours.
That's good. Keep, if you can start writing some words down, maybe, because you may, so I'm, I'm going to ask, and I look for direction from staff, but we have no motion on the floor. This was a draft motion. I, I am making an assumption, but I'm not sure that we don't, we could ignore this. Or, and, and that's why I asked Councilor Kay to write some, start to write some of a motion. Or are we to, do we need to bring this motion, at least the first clause, and vote on it? And then if it is voted down, we wouldn't need to do the next two, but we could entertain another motion. Which is the best way?
I think you probably want to put the motion on the table and have an outcome, so that that can be shared formally with the county. If it's defeated, then the other two don't need to go forward. Just looking, I don't know from, Mike was sort of raising his hand, it'll fill on the financial, he had something, but yeah, the other two motions would be.
Just in terms of, from Councilor Ingham's comments about if there was a two-year pilot project in it, and, and then there'd be some sort of commitment to an IMSA. I would just, and we all know this, but the Remo IMSA came after, and I believe it was a two-year pilot, where the theory was basically proven out, and then the commitment to the, then long-term IMSA. That idea of whether or not you could direct the CAO to go back to talk to the county of, set aside the immediate five-year, and I realize there's a risk for them around staffing and whatnot. But that it be, and I'm picking two-year pilots, simply because that's what we stated. A two-year pilot to see whether it proves itself out to address pretty much every concern, I think, that's been voiced around the table. That would allow the process to start immediately. Prove itself or not prove itself, and then a decision be made. But I don't know whether that's practical. I kind of look to Erin to know whether that's even something that could be entertained at the county.
Well, that's why I said, if it was just the timing of the agreement, then that'd be something we could go back and have a conversation about. If there's other concerns about working with Kings County on this file, and will it best meet the needs of Wolfville? You know, I don't want to go down that road if there's just not that interest, but you're, you're right. That's how Remo happened, and then it was successful, and we continued it over. And we took the risk as the host unit, that if it didn't work at the end of the two years, and we were the ones that had to address that, so the county would be taking on that risk.
So why don't we put the first clause of this motion and vote, and then, and then we'll know where we should go next. So would somebody like to read, to move that motion? Go ahead.
The count, I would move that council.
Committee of the whole.
The committee of the whole authorize the mayor and CAO to sign the attached intermunicipal service agreement for the inclusive Kings County.
That's fine. I would just say, if we could change it, that we, committee of the, the whole move to council to authorize the mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we can make that, and a seconder, please, Councilor Elliot. Are there any other comments? All in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you, Councilor McKay. Nobody ever says nay, so I didn't say that. All right, so that motion is fails. CAO will take that, so we don't need the next two. Is it our pleasure, and, and Councilor McKay has probably been working on something, to listen to her motion, or Director McLean threw another thing on the table.
Okay, so what is, what is the motion like?
I'd like it.
Just. Dear question.
What's, are you going to put the motion in responding to Mike's and the two-year pilot project? Are we going to vote on that?
No, that was what I said.
That's another, that's a separate.
Councilor McKay was working on a motion, then Director McLean suggested what would be a different motion, I'm assuming. But Deputy Mayor?
I, I guess I'm just wondering if we go back to the comments that Senior Boden made, that maybe we get something back from staff before we.
I think that's what Councilor McKay's motion is about. Am I right? Yes. Yeah, that was the direction. Councilor McKay.
Okay. So I can make a stab at it here. I would move that the committee of the whole for the following motion to council for decision, that we direct staff to develop an engagement and consultation plan for the Wolfville specific to diversity inclusion action items, develop sorry, Plan and Celebrate the African Heritage Month, and Plan and Celebrate International Women's Day.
Could we say bring a report back? That would, because we're not asking staff to do that. We're asking them to bring a report back with associated costs.
Thanks for that clarification. I was going to say, it would be nice to have identify some budget constraints, because the existing staff wouldn't be able to necessarily, so.
Yeah, if you could bring back a report on those three items, please.
Okay. A seconder and then last for comments. One more time.
Yeah. That committee of the whole for the following motion to council for decision, that council directs staff to come back with a report on, on developing engagement and consultation plan for the Wolfville specific action items, to plan and celebrate African Heritage Month, and to plan and celebrate International Women's Day.
The only thing that I was missing, there were, there were other things, so the report would look at how we might address EDI in Wolfville specific.
Sorry, that was number four. I think I skipped it. Develop staff work plans as per implementation plan.
Were you, just for the record, I don't know that Amanda caught the whole thing, so if it's.
Let's read it one more time.
Okay. That committee of the whole for the following motion to council for decision, that council directs staff to develop an engagement and consultation plan for Wolfville specific action plans. Develop staff work plans per implementation plan. And Plan and Celebrate African Heritage Month. Plan and Celebrate International Women's Day. So it was a report on those four items.
To include budget.
And yes, include budget. Develop a plan and budget.
We'll get this to you. We'll get, we'll get it to you.
And if you go to page four of five on that request for decision, they are the last of it. So it is to develop to bring back a report and budget on those four items. So from number three to six on that. So a report and budget for those. Okay, so from three to six on there, so a report and budget on those four items.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, before we get a seconder, or is your comment after a seconder? So.
I'm happy to second.
You're happy to second. Okay. Do you have a, you have a comment or a question?
I do. I just wondered whether we should include at the beginning of that an EDI plan or report. And then focus on activities such as, because I wouldn't want to just limit it to those, like, maybe if there's something else that comes up, or maybe one of those isn't feasible for us to do, but there's something else. Like, I, I think those are important things we not always need to celebrate, but I see them more.
Yeah, I think that's where I thought. Yeah, so, but to develop the engagement and consultation plan, well, I don't know what that will be. I guess I'm leaving that up to whatever.
Stop it there.
Can I make a suggestion?
And then.
You go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to suggest that those be listed as suggested, such as these, and maybe others. There could be many others that could come forward.
Can I just make it maybe just a little bit more specific? Maybe just that staff have a diversity calendar that maybe is specific towards Wolfville. And that would be inclusive a lot more, because there's so many, there are so many of them. And so if we could maybe identify a calendar every month.
We could add that to.
Yes, we could add a diversity calendar to that.
I guess I see that as part of develop an engagement and consultation plan. So I, I don't want to speak for anyone and say that this is the most important thing on the list. I'm just saying, whatever the staff come back with as an engagement and consultation plan, which I'm sure is going to have many of the things that everyone's kind of has on their top of mind. But I don't want to be limited to, because I'm not, I'm not an EDI specialist, so I, I don't want to be restricted in sex things. And I think the only two things that were at the very bottom of that list were, so that those could come back and be planned immediately. So we were taking immediate action, as well as developing a plan to go into the future. That's how I saw it, if that made sense.
Councilor McKay, does your motion have something about budget in it to bring back including an appropriate budget? Is that in there?
I think it was report and budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just as we're talking, and just trying to be cognizant of the staff resources that I know we have now, I think with some additional funding support, five and six could be done through Kelt and Shop this fiscal year. And there is some budget money that was set aside for the IMSA, maybe that, but the, the number three and four, I almost see, instead of doing a piecemeal, because we're starting to have discussions around the EDI plan, if, why don't we do a project charter as part of this upcoming budget discussion, so that we can have a really good discussion on what you want to achieve from it? Then we can build it in for April first, and have a better plan of how you want to move forward, how you want to consult. Just, just trying to recognize what we have internally. Right now, I think if we just try to go and consult and do an engagement plan this fiscal year without really understanding what you want to achieve, we might miss the mark. So we can do five and six, and then we'll come back with a project charter, recognizing this is important, and how we might operationalize it, go forward.
It's not to really mess up what Amanda has done, because that seems different than what.
Yeah, and I'm just suggesting that.
Does everybody like what the CAO just said?
Yeah.
Could you craft a motion on the spot? For us? And then I'll ask. For us, and then I'll ask Council McKay to move. Because she's.
Why don't I just take direction and come back, because this is committee of the whole. I'll come back on the fifteenth with a motion that can be approved in real time. That would speak to what we feel we would need from a budgetary perspective to do five and six. And with the wording around moving forward with the project charter for budget, so I don't need it necessarily to be a recommendation. I can go away and craft it and it'll show up in your package.
Need a motion to direct.
No, I think that's, that's fine. I'll take that direction.
So we'll defeat this motion and then we'll.
Okay, because we do have a motion on the floor. Alright. All those in favor of the motion as read, please indicate by saying I. No, all those opposed indicate by saying nay. Nay, okay, that is defeated and we are now going to direct C A O and staff to come back with a. Report.
A project charter.
Yeah, the project charter.
With the motion.
With the motion, help me.
You're just providing me direction to come back with a plan to execute five and six with budgetary requirements for this fiscal year and a project charter. You won't have the project charter for the fifteenth, it will be giving me.
The motion to proceed with the project charter as part of budget.
Okay.
We good? No, we don't have to vote on it. We don't have to vote. Alright, I'm going to call a ten-minute recess.
Can I just add one more question, because I just have to make sure I have everything. So as I spoke about the two-year pilot and then. Director McLean spoke about it, did we want to have a motion to direct Erin or is this the motion good enough? I just don't.
I think our direction to the C A O will take all of that into consideration. She will bring back something at.
So, so just so I'm clear, does that include speaking with the C A O about a two-year pilot project on that? Does that include part of that?
I was sort of taking the direction that it's off the table.
Okay, that's what I just wanna, I mean, I can put the motion on, but I'm getting the sense that it would get defeated anyway, so I, I just need to be clear. So, okay.
Yeah, my, the project charter would be looking at more internally or garnering with Acadia what we might be able to do and what it would cost.
Okay. Alright, let's take a ten-minute recess. It is, just a minute. We don't need a motion to recess, do we? Do we need, no, so it's eleven oh three, back by eleven fifteen. Thank you. Great. Mike Long, we are in recess. Let us know. Welcome back, council. We have forty-five minutes before some of us have to, have to leave, so. I'm gonna ask Council McKay. Re your, thank you, re your, your request for agenda item. Alex is not here yet. And given our time constraints, would you be okay putting that off to the council meeting? In the November council meeting? So I'd like to have Alex do a report and also cognizant of the time.
I actually wasn't looking for a report.
You were just, so you were just asking, so, so it can be a short one, you're asking council to put it on an agenda?
No, to have it done, there was. Mine wasn't to actually bring back a report through.
You're, you're asking us to, if we want to put it on an agenda. As opposed to discuss it today.
Well, I'd be happy to discuss it today or put it on the agenda, but we've already had a report come back and it was already.
It's, it's just the discussion of it. Alex is going to bring some information back about legality or some, I don't know.
So I, I mentioned to Alex that this was on there. He has some different ideas for some of the intersections that he's been going out doing some evaluations on. Particularly the one. Gaspereau and Pleasant. That he just would like to bring forward and he also followed up with H R M on how their program works with the flags. It's done with volunteer groups that then have a. I don't know if it's a contractor, an agreement with the city, so he just wanted to bring that information as part of the discussion. And then council can make their decision, but I was kind of hoping he'd be here today in case there was any questions, but. He's not, so.
So I guess there are two issues that are time constraint.
Yeah.
And think that this will have some discussion and also Alex not being here, but. Ken, are you okay if we move that item to the council meeting? November fifteenth?
Sure, in, in the interest of time, I guess, so I, I guess I just wanted to say to council, I, I really. My thought on this was to just bring it forward so that I, we could implement some of these. Because I, the discussion on the policy was great, we decided not to use those, although. The logic that seemed to be put forth was that there was an expectation. That we didn't use flags because there was a level of expectation that people had to be safe when they cross the streets. And I would say that that is the same level of expectation I have when I hit the button or don't hit the button when I cross the street.
We're not, so, so obviously there's discussion here and in the interest of time. Again, can we put it to the council meeting on November fifteenth?
Can I ask a question? It's about this.
Yes.
So if we move it to the council meeting, can we motion it at the council meeting that it is implemented immediately as opposed to moving?
If it is approved by council.
If it is approved to then move it to, okay.
Yes, of course, because we're at a council meeting.
But there was no present, I didn't want it to be a presentation with a motion to go to the next.
No.
Committee of the whole to then go to the next council, okay.
We would actually have discussion on the item at council. And move it. So are we okay? For that, okay, thank you. Alright, so, so that item request for agenda item on crosswalks will get moved. To council meeting on November the fifteenth. And there will be discussion, I'm sure. So. Mostly in the interest of time, but also it would be good to hear from. From Alex, our director of public works. So that brings us to the R F D zero forty-eight. Twenty twenty-two for the Ren I M S A. C A O, assume you're going to lead that as well.
Yes, and I can, I think I can be quick.
So as part of the budget process, as I mentioned in the previous discussion, there was some dollars that were earmarked. By council in this current year's budget to consider joining the Valley Ren. I can say that it's not contemplated that we would be in a position to do that this fiscal year. If council decides to move forward, it would be effective April first twenty twenty-three. Because we are looking at a brand new I M S A that would bring all the parties to a new agreement on that date. And it would make no sense to come in now with four months remaining under the existing I M S A. And there's a big process that would have to be followed by the other partners since we're not currently part of it. So we're looking forward to April first twenty twenty-three. As you are aware, we pulled out a number of years ago from the Ren. And since that time, there's been some discussions at the council level about whether we would like to go back in or, or not. Acadia has been involved in the Ren. At least on a couple of initiatives and I know that the presidents had conversations with the mayor around our participation. As I started this R F D, I, I did start the exercise of trying to go back to twenty seventeen and sixteen. To see what the concerns of council were at the time and then try to identify, you know, have they been met? And that's really difficult to do. We haven't been at the table. There's been a lot of change. I think there's going to be more change to come. What I can say is going through this process with the other partners to try to strengthen the I M S A. Does start to get at some of the overarching concerns. The biggest change that I see is strengthening the role of the Oversight and Liaison Committee. Anyone that sat on that committee knows it was. Was fairly token by times and so strengthening that, so there is that oversight is key. The other key piece in it is that it clearly identifies the expectations of a core service. But it also allows for an element of special projects to be added to the work plan. And a mechanism for how that happens, which includes communication to the municipalities, because what's been happening in the past. Is there some confusion over what's core, what's special project? Sometimes especially projects might even be at odds. With what the municipalities are doing and the communication wasn't there, so there's good mechanism now for that to be in place. And the other piece is tourism is now clearly in scope and that never was before. So there's an opportunity, I think, now for us to, to provide some feedback through that and the STAR program is something the Ren has been. Working with, so I think, you know, when you look at some of the concerns that council had, you know, certainly I think those are, are addressed through the I M S A. What we're asking for now is not for you to sign off on the I M S A that you see, although you've got a draft in front of you that's pretty close. What we're asking is the parties to identify whether they're interested in joining before the end of December. So that we have an idea of who's in and who's not, because similar to the previous discussion we just had, if there's a bunch of parties that are out, it looks different and. There'll be some choices in that, then what will happen is we'll see who's in. And then we're gonna go away and just make sure that we've got the funding model right. So in your R F D. We've provided what the funding model under the existing formula looks like, so you can see the impact for Woolfield. That's not gonna change all that much, but the funding formula may change if, if there's a better model that we can come up with, but we haven't done that until we know which parties are in. And we will come back with that and the new I M S A. Sometime, I would say January, February for final approval for all the parties that are interested and it would take effect April first. So that's, that's really the timeline if you look at the next steps. So the R F D, you've got a memo that Jen Boyd. C A O that led the discussions with the working group on the Ren, so she's been back and forth, she's worked with the board, she's been to the liaison oversight committee. And she's prepared that memo that kind of highlights some of the key pieces and then you've got the draft I M S A in front of you. Just sort of gone through the history, there's a number of, of R F Ds that have come before council in previous years. We've been out now for three fiscal years completely. So the draft is there, I've summarized some of these key points, just, just to note the withdrawal provision would be thirty-six months. So if we do sign on April first, it is a three-year commitment that everybody would be making. And again, that's just stability for the organization, stability for the staff. There's been a lot of disruption over the last number of years since the Ren came to be in the valley where people were flipping in and out and it, it is difficult. So the thirty-six month is, is something that's new, but was felt that it was important. And then I did mention in the previous discussion, the dispute resolution clause is now in place. As it is with all of the new I M S As that will be bringing forward. So I've chatted about this. I've chatted about next steps, so the financial implication, so this is just based on the current formula. So you can see Woolfield is eight point two percent if everybody is in at just under twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's very similar to what we had in the budget for this year, when we thought that maybe we, you know, council could be making this decision in the current fiscal year. As I said, I, I don't see that that would change all that much. What might change it is if some of the bigger partners don't come in, so. Windsor West Hands, for example, has given a one-year notice. Now, they've been at the table as part of this discussion and are considering. Staying with the run under the new I M S A, but if they don't, for example, that twenty-one percent comes out. So then the parties have a decision, do we absorb their share so we can get the cost shared amount from the province? Or do we just, you know, that we lose that money and then we just rejig amongst ourselves? So there might be some changes depending who's in or out, but I just want you to have an idea of magnitude. Based on the existing. And those options are there. So yeah, I think this one's a little more straightforward, but right now, all we're looking for is if there is a general interest for council. This doesn't lock you in, but it does show in good faith sort of what your intention would be. And as I mentioned, we would come back after Christmas with this specific financial details. And the actual I M S A to sign off, which shouldn't look all that different than what you see in front of you.
Questions for the C A O? Council Elliot?
I just wanted to say I'm really happy that tourism is. Getting sorted out because I think it's been a major gap in the last few years, this sort of nobody's ballpark and that's great.
So the Ren, when we talked and when we came out of it, the. Three or four years ago, I guess, a lot. Might have been even four by the time we put our intention. This new, I am, so the organization then at that time had gone through, I don't know, two, three executive directors. Three or four rebrandings, three or four strategic plans, like all within a really short amount of time. So over the last, but it has been stable to the best of our knowledge. And has been working well.
Yeah, I would say that the board, the board is stabilized for sure. And I think as now they're able to kind of clearly delineate the core program and some of these special projects, they can take a look at their staff complement. And make sure that they've got the right pieces in place at a staff level to operationalize what this will look like, but the board, I would say is stable.
And our. Because it felt like, I think we went to the last meeting and it was. It was really bad. Enough that you can remember, like I vividly remember it. So our level of input, so when that will have. It will look different under this new I M S A in terms of structure and going forward, so. I, I'd be fine with that if it's under a different structure.
Yeah. I, as I understand. It was, it was a bad meeting because we were leaving and, and there was just lots of nasty things said about us, but we were in the room. But I think one of our reasons at the time for pulling out, we sat on the L O C, the. Does that even stand for now? Liaison Oversight Committee and we only met. Once or twice a year, so hardly any oversight and our biggest job was to. Interview, identify and interview people on the board and then give the board our vetted people. I believe it's changed quite a bit now. I think they're meeting monthly and I think they have a liaison with the board that was much. Better than it was before, so that's my sense of not being part of it, but talking to people who are.
That's my sense too. I know that as Mayor Snow, near the end of her tenure, was really starting to move them in that direction and now Council Windsor, I believe, is chairing it. And he's really trying to, to be impactful even in advance of this new I M S A and really try to up the game of the L O C. It's my understanding too, having not been in the room, but.
Would somebody like to put this motion on the table?
I haven't said anything yet. I move that committee of the whole for the following motion to council, the council provide a letter of intention to the existing parties of the Valley Waste. I M S A to join as a party effective April first twenty twenty-three. That's what it says. I was, yeah, I was like, Valley Ren. I M S A to join as a party effective April first twenty twenty-three. Valley Ren, Valley Ren I M S A.
Stands for Regional Economic Network.
Yes.
Okay, thank you and seconded. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying I. I oppose, that's passed. Alright. So that brings us to. Director McLean for the quarter, second quarter financial update.
This was gonna be the time I read it line by line, but I guess time does not allow.
Half an hour.
Everybody's had a chance to, to look at the agenda package itself and, and the report, both the info report and the two supporting schedules. So I think at this stage, what I'd highlight is, as usual, the audit committee has spent a fair bit of time, I think probably a little over two hours going through this. This past Friday. Keys for this one, a month and a half ago, much of our discussion was around capital budget. And where things fell and what may carry forward into the upcoming budget process. That theme continued through this particular info report, but we did spend probably more time than we have. In years, I think, discussing tax arrears, which is not a usual key update, but. If you had a chance to look in the report, it's prudent for us to, to note that we are. In pure dollars behind where we would be a year ago or the year before that, some nine hundred thousand dollars. As of the other, like a week ago was still outstanding. We usually get a, a good chunk of that through the month of October. But six hundred of that, and I'm being kind, a little north of six hundred thousand relates to. One business that owns multiple buildings, so we're formally following up on that too. They're not in the tax sale process and that was a key part of our discussion at audit. But it is a significant dollar. In today's world, I don't think we talked about is the town at risk. We can say we're not at risk, given the real estate market. But we will make efforts that are a little above usual to, to get the dollars in the door. On the upside, interest and overdue taxes is probably at a rate that. I wouldn't be able to find an investment to, to match that. So in the short term. We will make. A return interest on outstanding taxes and we'll follow up and get the dollars collected. And so that was, and I'll defer to the committee members, I think that was part of our key discussion on Friday. And I'd leave it open to any questions in the focus of time. And I'd leave it open to any questions in the focus of time.
Are there any questions? There is no motion on this.
No.
What is the interest rate?
I believe we're one percent per month. We used to be one and a half, but we changed it a couple of years ago during the COVID, but. I can't recall whether we went to one percent per month or one and a quarter off the top of my head, but it's, so the return. Annually was twelve to fifteen percent.
So it's almost like borrowing that money.
It, it is, but it's at a rate that. One could get a better deal if they wanted to borrow money. As a business. They, they could do better than that. I'd suggest it's, it's not, they're not taking advantage of our interest rate. I'd suggest we're benefiting from it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Director McLean. There is no motion on that. Yes, we are. Right. Sweet.
I think we did that.
We did that already. We did that under the audit report.
That's what threw me off. I, I wasn't tuned in and that came under the audit report.
Send the, at the very beginning, hours ago, we did it. You threw me off too. Yeah, I know. It sometimes feels like Groundhog Day. And we have an information report on the quarterly. Second quarter attendance report for council for. Your information and for the public's information. C O, did you want to comment?
Yeah, just to note that if anyone does have any feedback on the format, just send Laura an email. She was curious to see how it was received and if you have any improvements or ideas, just to let her know.
And then down to committee reports external. I will just ask if there is. Anything else? Counselor Butler, you want to add on your King's Point to Point? Counselor Inham, Annapolis Valley Trails Coalition, anything you'd like to add? I see a W B D C verbal report.
Thank you. We had a very good W B D C meeting on October seventeenth. And it started with a wonderful presentation by Barb Shaw. Who presented on the police review process, provided an update and was. It was a very engaging discussion. And so thank you, Barb, for taking your, the time to come. I think people really appreciated the update and. Had lots of questions and ideas. It was a, it was a very good thing. Then there was a discussion about Think Well shifts and this is the, an initiative. That we're, we're starting regarding energy smart business initiative. To help businesses learn about saving money on energy. And again, that was also. Very well received because the W B D C is certainly interested in environmental sustainability and what they can do through. Its membership to, to advance that. So working on that project was, was very good. And then there was just some, some other minor thing, housekeeping. They've made some changes through their. How they're going to proceed with some of the media work that they're doing. But other than that, it was a very, very productive meeting.
Any questions? I see that there's an error in the agenda because I see that there's a remote. Report in the, in the package and it's not on my. Cover agenda list. Anything else you'd like to add?
Dan is more than. He touches all of this.
Okay. I have nothing else to add on the I M S A for Valley Waste and King's Transit. If there are any questions? Deputy Mayor? Your lights on.
Sorry.
It's okay. And I just have a, a very brief verbal report on. The V C F N, that's the. Valley Cable. Valley Community, I was trying to see fiber network. I, I think it would be worth some time having Chad. I know some members of council were here in the last council and may have attended the. Session at the county that talked about the, the V C F N. I find Chad, who is a King's. I T employee really just excellent, explaining everything in a way that makes it really exciting. So. I would think it would be, council would enjoy having him come. The, my first term on council, I, and this is embarrassing. We never had a V C N F N report and I thought, why do we have somebody on the network connected with the Wolf Company? Because I thought fiber, I did not know. That's how out of it I was, but since I have been involved, it's very informative. Quickly before I tell you what the issue is. So Woolfield, West Hans, Berwick and Kings County. And. And Acadia. And N S C C. I don't think there's any other municipal. I don't think it's Middleton. It's not Kentville. Our owners, at least the municipalities are owners of the cable that runs basically from Delhousy Underground. Through. Our municipalities and connects to Acadia and connects to. N S C C. Interestingly, our municipalities use that, that is our network. And so one time, not too long ago, the network went down. But it didn't go down in anywhere else in Woolfield, but it went down in Town Hall because we are not, we get our internet from V C F N. So they, there has been an issue, intermittent loss of connection between somewhere between Halifax and Kentville, although they believe. It's this side of Windsor because not problems. On the, of course, they're not, so it's not in West hands. It seems to be Windsor to Kentville. Intermittent loss of connection and also loss of connection between. Kentville and Middleton. In addition to municipal clients and the, and the post secondary. Centers of education, there are also private sector, private. Purchasers of black, the, the black cable who like country, cross country, which I don't know if that is still there. One of them was just bought, I think by Rogers. So there was the one between Kentville and Middleton are actually affecting private owners. So Chad gave us a number of items of how to figure out what the problem is and it was decided by the committee. That we would have a, something I'm not even going to go into the technology rather than doing a point in time. Check to see if there's a problem with those cables that they would do something that would always be identifying where the inter, what it was causing the intermittent loss. The costs basically were not dissimilar and if you do a point in time and the, the loss is not there at that point in time, it doesn't help you. So. So that was interesting. I do think it would be worthwhile having Chad come in and just explain to council, new council. What the V C F N is. It's, it's quite an asset, but certainly in the day it was a huge asset to have underground fiber cable. It is perhaps a little less so now, but it's, it's quite an asset that we are part owner. So that's my quick verbal report. And with Counselor McKee's indulgence, we have put that item off to the item on the. Crosswalk flags off to council and yes, if there's a decision out of. There will be an opportunity for a decision and that will happen at council. It will be punted to somewhere else. And. Mike Long, do we have anybody from, for public input?
We do not.
We do not. So could I have a motion to adjourn to go in camera, please? Counselor Elliott and a second or please. Deputy Mayor, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, we are going in camera and when we come.